All set, okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of October 21st. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. In our typical fashion, we're going to start off the meeting a little bit differently than you. We're going to have a quick introduction, and an important introduction, of a new employee of the town, someone that this council, the administration, and the departments spent a lot of time, effort, and energy in finding this position, talking about this position, seeing the value in this position. And wow, am I putting a lot on your shoulders, Jessica. So, we're going to introduce Jessica, and ask her to come up, if you would. Jessica is our new Economic Development Coordinator. What does that mean? Jessica's going to be part of the team. Yeah, I'm going to answer my own question. Jessica's part of our Community Development Team, and that team is headed by Diane Williamson, along with Ed Tanner, and it doesn't stop there because nothing that the town does is not economic development, right? So, everything that we do is economic development, but the focus is through community development. I think it's the first step if you're opening up a new business, if you're questioning, expanding your business, a myriad of things like that. So, Jessica comes to us, we're very happy to have her here. She's been here how long now, Jessica?
This is my fourth week.
Fourth week with us. The interactions that I've had with her, with meetings and with the East Bay Chamber of Commerce, among others, a new business owner this morning, is wonderful. I'm proud to have her part of our team. I had some questions about, I'm going to go in a kind of a negative, but it ends up being a positive, is where did this money come from? Because we had a lot, more than a few people asked me this. Good news is that this position that Jessica has never existed before, but what we did is we took monies that were already apportioned to a part-time position, plus monies that were apportioned towards administration fees for our CDBG grants, and then benefits were already included with our budget. So, at the end of the day, this was not much of a stretch for us, but the benefits are just monumental. So, Jessica, why don't you share a little bit about yourself and tell us why Bristol's the best place in sliced bread?
All right. Thank you very much for having me tonight. I'm very excited to be a part of Bristol. From the very beginning, I kind of stumbled upon Bristol on accident on the way to Newport one day shortly after moving to Rhode Island, and just going down Hope Street, I just immediately fell in love with the town. The downtown is great, and that was my first introduction. So, when I saw the job open up in Bristol, I thought it'd be a really great opportunity, and then through the interview process and a couple of bike rides down on the East Bay Bike Path and that kind of thing, I came to enjoy it even more. The energy here, the teamwork, everyone's been so welcoming, and so I really appreciate that, and I'm very excited to be here. A little bit about me, I grew up in North Carolina, started school in South Carolina, transferred, finished my undergraduate in Sustainable Development in North Carolina at Appalachian State. That's where I found community development and planning, and so I decided after that that I wanted to pursue a master's degree. So, I earned my master's degree in May 2015 from Ball State University in Muncie, Indiana, and took a trip to Rhode Island last summer and fell in love with it and decided, why not move after graduation? So, that's kind of how I ended up here. Just, I'm going to go over kind of a couple of things that I've been working on since I started, and some of the things that I have coming up. So, since my first day, I've been really trying to reach out to a bunch of the businesses, get to know some of the business owners, especially in the downtown right now, because that's kind of the core where I am right now, but then branching out. And my very first week, I attended the Manufacturers' Day tours that the East Bay Chamber put on, and learned about Taylor Box and Jade Plastics here on the East Bay. I was really excited to see a lot of the opportunities for the East Bay and how manufacturing is still a very strong sector here. So, I'm excited to continue working with manufacturers and seeing what kind of partnerships the town can make with the Chamber and the school systems and that kind of thing. And in fact, this coming Friday, I'm attending a meeting where hopefully the manufacturers and the school department can come together and explore partnerships for the younger generations coming up, and also hopefully for some of the older populations looking to continue in the manufacturing sector and, you know, workforce development, job training opportunities. I've worked closely with Diane the past couple of weeks on the CDBG 2015 state application. The focus there, I was really excited to see a lot of economic development projects coming through, especially with the Bristol Industrial Park and some of the other service providers that the town works with. And the quarterly report also was due last week, so that was fun, to say the least. So, going forward, working with CDBG and seeing how that can help with economic development in the town, and lining up with some of the initiatives that are already happening in Bristol, I think is a really exciting opportunity. I'm working on sort of the process of starting an inventory on space available for commercial industrial businesses. I've reached out to some of the retail, or not retail, the realtors in town to start that process and find out how Bristol can work with them to help businesses who want to locate in Bristol or expand. And this morning, I met with the new owners of the Bristol Harbor Inn to see kind of their plan for the future for that whole area, and I was really excited to meet with them. They've got a lot of really good ideas and a lot of energy there. And earlier this week, I met with the Economic Development Commission, introduced myself, and I'm excited to work with them on their initiatives and see what we can do together to help the economic development initiatives that the rest of the community may have and how we can move that forward through the commission. I will be attending the Arts District Workshop in November, coming up with Roger Williams University, exploring the possibilities there with the decommissioned schools, and kind of figuring out how the arts can drive economic development in town. And so, it's my hope that I can work closely with the town administrator, town council, and all of the town departments to kind of further the economic development initiatives that are important to the community, and any community members who have ideas, I'm more than open to pursuing and exploring. So, that's me in a nutshell.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, welcome, welcome to the team, and we're excited to have you, and we can't wait to see what you're going to do in Bristol and bring Bristol to new heights. Bristol is a wonderful community, it's a great administration, great council, and you're really going to enjoy it. We're going to, we have a lot of fun.
All right, thank you.
Jessica, I wish you the best. It is a very good night to see you in front of us. It took, in January, it'll be two years since I proposed this position amongst my colleagues and many entities and agencies that felt the need, and then at the end of the day, it did take close to two years because there was a lot of conversations through our comp plan, and many people had ideas of how we could fit this in. The chairman made a crucial point with the budget, that it was money that we already had, so I see it going a long way, and also at the end of the day, through the Community Development Department, how you're going to fit in and the help of the need of what Diane and Ed had expressed to us. So, at the end of the day, I think this is a good turn for the town of Bristol, and we welcome you, and we only have bright and positive things going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, the first item on this evening's agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next is submission of minutes of previous meetings, Items A, 1, 2, and 3.
Is there a motion?
I'm watching to see if that can be approved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is your, is public hearing. This is to consider the matter of Lloyd Adams for Bristol Harbor Inn LLC doing business as Bristol Harbor Inn, 259 Thang Street, request council consideration for the transfer of the Class BH intoxicating beverage license to Donald S. McCaw for BHI LLC doing business as Bristol Harbor Inn at same address. This is just new ownership, same location, same name.
Appropriate to combine D1 with this, Lou?
Absolutely.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second to combine, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, so this is a public hearing, as you heard from a fine clerk about a transfer of intoxicating beverages license. We're going to open up to the public hearing. Is anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak against?
Make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
With that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that this is a call for the public hearing.
Yeah, so we close that?
Okay, along with D1.
So, we've done that, we've closed the public hearing, so we need a motion, I'm not sure what the council's, but for an approval of this transfer?
I would move that we approve the transfer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the transfer. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations.
And welcome.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, there was a request for a license to maintain town property. Earlier this evening, the petitioners came forward and asked that the petition might be withdrawn.
Any motion of that effect, Lou? Do we need anything on that?
Make a motion to receive and file.
Seconded.
Make a motion to receive and file, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next item is, this has to do with ordinance 2015-14. Basically, what transpired was that the council did have a first reading on this ordinance, and then due to the way that the council schedule evolved, there was insufficient time to do the advertising. So, the decision was made administratively, considering this is a zoning issue, that it should be, for the purposes of the advertising, be coupled with another pending zoning matter, which you had your workshop on on Monday. That will be a little bit more efficient as far as the advertising goes, and also that we would have the public hearing to consider both matters at the same time. So, this is just really informational at this point, but because we're, I don't think we're really sure when the public hearing would be unless you want to just say that it's going to coincide with what you do on ordinance number C1.
So, what kind of motion do you need on that one, Lou, please?
You don't really need anything right now. Why don't we just wait until we do the next one?
Great.
Okay. Item C1, this is the first reading and call for public hearing on December 2 for the so-called medical marijuana ordinance. This would be an amendment to the zoning code as specified in the posting, which would allow for certain things, including special use permits, standards for various uses.
So, we spent a very long time, and also fruitful time, on Monday night at a special council, called a workshop, just a special council meeting, discussing this particular ordinance. There were some suggested changes that were made to the Assistant Solicitor that I know that are being worked on right now. Mike, do you believe that this is a timeframe that we could get those changes done?
Yeah, I think you could have introduction at your November 4 hearing, and we can go from there.
So, this should be continued to our November 4?
To November 4.
Can I have a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second, and discussion?
I have a question. Mike, excuse me, I mean, I want to make sure that the new draft would be here for November 4, which is not that far away, because I personally don't feel comfortable moving anything forward that is not very close to what the final version would be. You know, at the meeting on Monday, there was a significant number of, you know, many issues raised about confidentiality.
Yes.
HIPAA laws, and very good points being made in terms of safety for the, so, you know, privacy as well as safety for the cardholders, and I think it comes down, at least in my view, to very few, like the Compassion Center and maybe large growers that could easily be regulated, and I'm not sure about the rest. So, I mean, if we have the new version on the 4th, we could do the public hearing on the 2nd, but would then we have, will we have the new version by November 4? Because that's only a few weeks away.
We'll get it out to you ahead of time, too. You won't be reading it the night of the 4th.
Excellent. That's important.
Yeah, absolutely. And we picked up on all of the issues, especially the ones that you referenced, in terms of confidentiality and how we're going to treat that.
To be on the safe side, do you want it attached to the motion that we are striving for November 4, but if any changes need be, that it's not drafted in time where there's questions from our colleagues, that it's to the next available council meeting?
So, why don't you just continue?
That way it has legitimacy.
If you, if you continue to November 4 this evening, and if there are issues, I'll let Lou know and all of you, and we can-
I'm pretty sure that you can call for the public hearing at the next meeting, because we need, I don't have my calendar, but we need three weeks of advertising because it's zoning, which can be-
Well, I think that sounds like a very good plan anyway, because if we as a council ought to-
I just want to grab it, make sure-
There will be always a call for it. Yeah. Chairman, I think we ought to have an opportunity in the November 4 meeting to introduce one or two other ideas the council might have, so that we do that preparation for the public hearing three weeks later.
Agreed, agreed. Okay. Is there anything else before? Lou's checking on the date for us, but the motion and seconded, and we were just in the discussion portion, was to continue this to our November 4 meeting, which is two weeks away.
Yeah, so that would mean that it could be advertised on the 12th and 19th and the 26th, which would leave it fine for the 2nd.
Great.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
No issue.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And we'll make the decision on that other public hearing at the same time.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Just let me get that note. Can I just have the, who made the motion, who made the second?
Halsey made the motion, and Tim seconded it.
Next item is a second reading for adoption of ordinance 2015-17 as amended. This is the so-called recycling ordinance, this is a second reading for adoption.
Mr. Chairman, based on the endorsement of the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corps, the endorsement of the DPW Director, and the endorsement of the town administrator and the Recycling Committee, I would like to make a motion that this constitutes the approval of the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that, as was the case with the first reading, I'm not going to vote for this, and I'll give you my thinking about that. Indeed, it's true that this is a more careful rendering of the guidance to the important issue of recycling, and there are in it some improvements in the administration of that. The portion that I dislike is that which is the demand upon our good citizens to absolutely participate every single week. I would rather that we resorted to persuasion than to coercion of our citizens. And the other part of that is that I have a concern, both at the last meeting and reinforced in the interim in thinking about it and studying it some more, I have a concern that this is going to be a change where if the ruling is strictly followed, that you won't pick up rubbish unless there's a recycling bin, that it's going to take time to make a determination, sort it out, call headquarters and so forth. And if it proves that it does take so much time that the already almost full capacity is exceeded, and we get a request for more help and more expense to maybe have to go to three trucks instead of two, at that time, I would strongly urge that we rescind that element of this provision on the assumption it's going to pass now. So, I'm not going to vote for it, and those are the reasons.
Other discussion?
Well, I think that, excuse me, I think there's, you know, Halsey makes some valid points, and I think, you know, overall, I think it's fairly good changes. I always have had, right along, we've had numerous meetings and numerous discussions, so we don't need to belabor it too long tonight, but I do have some concerns about the no-bin-no-barrel, not in, just in some outside cases, and I don't really feel that those aspects have been addressed. I mean, I think it's come a long way from what we first were given, and so I think I would commend people on that, but, so.
I can, I wanted to share a couple of things. I had a couple of residents reach out to me and kind of paint a scenario that I had not considered, which was, they live on a street where the trash is sometimes left out, and the, it happens to be some students, but it's not just students, it just happens to be this road, that leave out trash and leave out trash, and this resident was concerned saying that, are you just going to exacerbate the situation? Because now they're, they're not doing what they're supposed to do, they're leaving their trash in too long, and then they're leaving it out too long. What if, what if now they don't pick up the trash, and now there's piles of trash over there, because there's a rodent issue over there because of the trash being left out? Don't misunderstand where I'm coming from. I don't think, I think this ordinance makes sense, and I think we should pass it, but I also think that we need to be cognizant of there's unintended consequences. In fact, Halsey, I think you brought that up, about cost involved that we may not realize yet, but at the end of the day, I think this makes sense, but I, we have a sunset policy on this, if my memory's correct, for a year.
You do.
But I would also ask that to the DPW Director and Mr. McBride, that we could have you come back to us in two months. I think that's enough time to implement the program and give us an update and tell us how the success is going. We expect there will be some questions in the beginning. Had a resident ask me, well, I, what if I don't have any recyclables this week? What do I do? And the answer is, put out your blue bin, or your green bin, whatever you happen to have, it doesn't matter. That is, yes, you always put out your bin, that's the key on this. The other thing is, if you recall at the end of our conversation, that I actually said, this is a very reasonable council, this is a reasonable department head, and this is a reasonable admin, I can keep going with this, lots of reasonable people, and the goal is not to find somebody doing something wrong. The goal is to help people do something right, and most of our residents are already doing this. The ones that are not doing this, we're going to help them. This is not to try to find a way to not pick up garbage, because that's actually counterproductive. So, it's, in my opinion, that this is a good ordinance, but we need to be sensitive to the fact, you've already stated that you will be, I like the way that you want to approach this, I think this council does too, that it makes sense and it's reasonable, so therefore I'll be voting for it. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to put you at ease a little, the Recycling Committee is going to do a huge boots-on-the-ground campaign, so we'll be able to reach out to those residents and do a lot of education outreach on that to help mitigate that issue, any of this sort of confusion, so, just to let you know on that, we'll get out there.
Kevin, did you want to add something?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to answer a question I think Halsey brought up, because I think it's important that we do address it, and Councilman Harrisoff brought up the fact that he was concerned about us having to evaluate the trash, so to speak, on a site-by-site visit. We do that today, we do that from several aspects, whether or not the material that's in a recycle bin is actually recyclable material, whether or not the material that's put out with the trash can be thrown in the trash truck because it's either too heavy or not too heavy, or, so we do do an assessment on an ongoing site-by-site, and we, quite frankly, our mission is to collect the trash, and we're not trying to get around that. What we're trying to do is do it right, because we're proud of the fact that we're one of very few communities in this state that have not had a compromised recyclable delivery, and that's a kudo to the town of Bristol.
Which means that when we bring our recycling up-
Which means that we're doing the right thing.
When we bring our recycling up to Johnston-
Yes, but that means it's not contaminated with non-recyclable material, and that is something that the town should be proud of, and that, part of that is because of the quality control that takes place by those people that's collecting that trash, and that should be a pat on the back to them, and those that are running the recycle trucks. So, Halsey, I just wanted you to know, we are doing that today, and as you and I had spoken, we will continue to do that. I don't foresee that being a big stumbling block, but if the council president would like me to come back two months after the implementation date to give an update, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Well, I think that clarification is very constructive, and we thank you for it, but I do agree with the chairman that it would be sensible to have a review at the two-month point after the initiation of the process.
That's great, so we can plan on that?
That makes sense to me, too.
Beautiful. Is there any other discussion?
Could you just clarify when this will actually begin? Will it begin on, is it?
That's a great point, it's January-
Is it January?
Yes.
I just can't remember.
So, this does not take place tomorrow, next week, or the week after? It'll be 2016 when this takes place, but we suggest to everybody that you should be recycling right now, and I may, I also reiterate, that most are. So, you, most people are already doing this. The idea behind this is to help focus it that much more, to point out issues that, if you're not doing it, will help you do it more.
Yep.
So, again, not to catch people doing something wrong, it's to commend people doing something right. Do you want to share something real quick?
Yes. Good evening, Town Councilor, Keith Maloney. I finally, I looked at it, what is January 1? It's a Friday, so I don't know if this creates an issue, but I'm wondering if the DPW Director would prefer that we start it on January 4, which is a Monday, the beginning of a week cycle. If it doesn't make any difference, then it doesn't make any difference.
No, I don't think so.
But I just thought I'd mention it.
I think, I think the reasonableness that we spoke about earlier would kind of coincide with that start date. If it starts that date, I'm sure that we'll be looking at it and being reasonable about it.
At this point, and I, you know, a good point made by Keith, but I don't think the start date is really the make-or-break point. We can do it at whatever date the council sees feasible, and if one January is the date, then that's the date we'll start the program.
Well, January 1 is a holiday, so you won't be picking up trash that day.
Well, we'll be, correct.
Right.
That's great news, it'll be Monday anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Saturday, you'll be picking it up on Saturday, yeah.
So, we have a-
I have a question for DPW.
Could you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Britney Iacovelli.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. You shouldn't have to be the trash police, and I totally agree, but what is going to occur? I know you're going to notify everyone.
Right.
And I'm all for the recycling, but I'm also concerned, like it was noted, for the trash. If you don't, if there's no recycling and you don't pick up the trash, how, is someone going to go back and tell these people to take it off the sidewalk? I can go, I can attest to it, that it's left, you know, and you shouldn't have to do that, but something has to be done. Let's not forget the trash portion, not just the recycling portion.
We agree.
It's not going to be handled.
That enforcement happens through zoning, so our DPW, when they go by, if there's an issue, they're going to share it with the home base, if you will, and Kevin stopped anywhere he disagreed, but why don't you-
I think I can address your question. We already do that today. What happens is if there's a problem with the trash, whatever the case may be, you know, a lot of times, we get to the, to the home or the residents to pick the trash up, and there's a problem, the barrel's too heavy, or there's trash all over the yard, or recyclable material that they've left out can't be recycled. What the drivers do is actually call back in to DPW, and we record the address and record the problem, and then we try to contact the resident and let them know what the issue was relative to that problem. Now, if it gets beyond a couple of days and the trash stays there, then it goes into the hands of the code enforcement. We work with Ray Falcoa to wrap, to complete the cycle, if you will. So, there really isn't going to be much of a difference in that regard, other than we're focusing more on making sure that we're trying to recycle more.
The next part of that, too, is that currently, some of what we have for teeth, for zoning enforcement, is, there's an old Monty Python skit that says, "Stop," or "I'll say 'stop' again." It doesn't work very well, so we're changing some of that, too, we're looking into that. So, we're changing some of that, too, we're looking into that. And I know the administrator's been working on that, I've been working on that, and there's a, the solicitor has to make it more advantageous to do the right thing.
I understand, I mean, it's sad, because, and I know you do do that, but there have been occasions where I have had to stop my car after four or five days, get out, and take these trash barrels and move them to the back of the property that has left them on the sidewalk. That's what I'm concerned about. Okay, so just keep that in mind, you know, that it can't go that long, and it has been. So, I'd appreciate it.
Feel free to reach out to me or any of my colleagues, and when you start to see that, we'll, we'll be happy, your DPW director.
Mr. Falco.
Mr. Falco, yep, Ray Falco.
I have spoken to him, and it's, you know, it's continued, everyone's offering for me to call. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. I mean, it is a problem, you know, you start thinking, I'm all for it, but it's, if one, if it goes hand-in-hand with the trash, we're going to run into a problem if people are not caring enough for both. But thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You, too.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Okay, so we have a three to two in favor. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item C3. This is the second reading for adoption of the ordinance which controls veterans' tax
This, again, was coinciding our practice with our ordinance. So this added or subtracted nothing, it just coincided ordinance with practice. Is there a motion on this?
Move we adopt?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item C4. This is the second reading for adoption for a temporary, or rather, a part-time, no parking district in the vicinity of the Al Lady Mont Carmel School on High Street.
Move we adopt?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item, item C5, this is the first reading, under the alcoholic beverage establishment number, this would be to reduce the number of licenses from 28 to 27.
I think a motion, this constitutes the first reading. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The, the next item is item D2. This is the request of Asia Davidson on behalf of the Gooding Grill LLC, doing business as the Gooding Grill, 200 Gooding Avenue, request for the transfer of the Class B V intoxicating beverage license to Hector Angel for Casa Margaritas Bristol, doing business as Casa Margaritas Mexican Restaurant, same premises. This would be to call for a public hearing on November 4th.
I would move that we hold a public hearing on November 4th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item is the petition of Lauren Morton, 175 Franklin Street, request for a no parking space across the driveway. You have a recommendation of the town administrator and chief of police to deny.
Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. Lauren Morton, the requister that was just mentioned there.
Thank you.
Lauren Morton at 175 Franklin Street, the requister that was mentioned. I wanted to take just a few moments of your time tonight regarding the proposal to deny this request. First, I wanted to thank Sergeant Murato and the Bristol Police Department for taking the time to look into this request for me. But I also wanted to raise a few pieces for consideration. So, at this time, there's some compounding factors that I would like the council to consider prior to moving forward with the denial of this request. And they are specific to the speed in that particular area of the street, as well as the volume and type of vehicles. So, understanding that the police department did find that there is sufficient area to enter and exit the property because of the width of my driveway, we're not taking into consideration the speed of the vehicles that are traveling through there, and then also the proximity when they're passing one another as I enter and exit the property. The other piece I wanted to bring for consideration also is that there has been a history of incidents in this particular area. There are only two residents that exit on the northbound side of that road, and there have been incidents involving our fences that have been sideswiped, parked vehicles that have been sideswiped, and vehicles passing one another that have been sideswiped as well. So, understanding as I'm entering and exiting the property, that they are traveling closer to my property line because of the fact that they're parking along the opposite side of the street. I also wanted to raise pieces here, so the pictures that I believe you have in front of you as well, do demonstrate the proximity of a vehicle being parked and two vehicles passing. I believe that it's picture number five, does show you just how close to the property line they're coming. And taking into account the speed limit posted is 25 miles an hour, I would welcome anyone from the Bristol Police Department to sit in for an afternoon in my driveway to understand that that speed limit is not adhered to, specifically when there is parking happening right there as well. So I wanted to just raise those compounding factors to understand some of the other issues other than just the space component there.
Chief, could you add anything to this conversation?
If you could give us some clarity, I know that you gave us a great report here, and by the way, these are just so helpful to us.
Awesome.
This really does help out a lot, and you can see that out in public, there's five or six pictures to help us get a very clear idea of what's going on.
Absolutely.
I think those, I think those pictures reveal that it's a fairly wide street, and we've had a recommendation to deny. And I personally believe the pictures uphold that recommendation, that we deny the request.
Okay. I think the petitioner has a valid point as far as, you know, the width of the road. Unfortunately, we have no control over that. That road's been in existence for many, many years, and hopefully it'll continue to be in existence. The vehicles that travel that road, we don't have any control over that. As far as the speeders on that road, what I would ask you to do is if you could, maybe call Sergeant Murato, I can have him reach out to you, and you can maybe give us a proximity and timeframe on when these vehicles that you believe are speeding, which they may be. And at that point, I can assure you, we will do the best we can to educate the motorists traveling that road, and then we'll enforce shortly thereafter, I assure you that. But as far as the parking is, you can see, I mean, it's pretty difficult for us to veer either way, when the dimensions are there and you kind of spell it out when the police vehicles are pulling in and out. But I won't disagree that it is a difficult road to navigate at times. I've been driving it for 30 years at least. Okay? Thank you for your time, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion from this council?
I would, motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion to deny, and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you. Thank you for sharing that input, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item F2. This is the petition of Mary Patari, 161 Monhope Avenue, request council consideration for a no parking space in the vicinity of her residence near Goulart Avenue. You have laid out a recommendation of the town administrator and chief of police to approve.
Is the applicant here? Could you come in? Did you, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Could you state your name for the record?
Yes, this is Mary Patari, 161 Monhope Ave.
Welcome.
Hi, Mary.
So, we looked at, at the information that you shared with us, we got a last-minute agenda item that, from, from the chief and the police department, saying that we should approve this. They reviewed it and said that, I guess there's, and I looked it up, too, is there no parking that is adjacent to this?
Yes.
And it would just be in addition to that no parking area?
Correct. My parking space, driveway of sorts, is more of a carport than a driveway, is adjacent to a neighbor's space that is about the same size. And as you may or may not know, Goulart is pretty narrow, and pulling out of our driveway space, if there are cars parked opposite, at times is challenging. And this year, more so than years past, there seemed to be a large number of students living in the house two doors down, so there's always seems, especially in the evenings and on the weekends, multiple cars parked opposite my driveway space. So I usually have to do multiple maneuvers just to get out of my driveway. And I've started not being able to pull in, I need to back in, because I, I can't back out. So it's gotten quite challenging. I sort of wanted to do this petition since I bought the house in 2010, but it's not really become critical until this past year. And as I said, my neighbor, Rick Goulart, on Goulart, has the no parking designation opposite his space, but mine just was not ever designated that way.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would, yeah, no, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a motion to approve the new parking zone.
Not, not quite. We, this has to have an ordinance. So, you'd have to, I, I know where you're going, but if you'd have to refer it to the solicitor for an ordinance, and then we would have it available for the first reading at the next meeting.
I think that was the motion, wasn't it?
So moved.
Seconded.
So there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, the next item, we have the, just, the Economic Development Commission, just so the council is aware, George Berman did not seek reappointment. The council did, at its special meeting on Monday, appoint Andrea Rounds to fill that auxiliary position, and also elevated Marco Capaldi to the full position.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we repeat the vote of Monday that Marco was made a member, and that Andrea Watson is to be a new auxiliary member.
And a letter of thanks to...
And with a letter of thanks to Mr. Berman for his service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Okay. The next is the Harbor Commission Advisory Committee. There is a position available to fill in on expired term, which would expire in August of 2018. You have the petition of Owen O'Rourke of 41 Fails Road, who seeks council consideration for appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, for Owen O'Rourke to be, we interview him at a later date.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, you interview the new candidate? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Can I just ask, I don't know if this would be appropriate or not, but in this, the timing might have not been perfect for this, anyway. But if, we, we interviewed a number of people the other night on Monday, and even though we had asked for an interview, if it would be appropriate at these, if we know that in an upcoming council meeting, people have submitted their name, like from Monday to today, we could have interviewed some of these people, or this person, for example. Would that be possible? If it's possible, I would add them to the, to the list.
Yeah, what we typically do is we just check with the chairman, if it's okay, then we add people. In this particular case, it just wasn't enough time to do anything, and Ms. Bellotti was scheduled for, for Monday.
Right.
But we usually, if we do get the applications coming in late, we do check to make sure that it's, you know, the, the timeframe will fit. We always try to do that when we know it's coming up.
So even if you have somebody that's, like, sent their stuff early, like in week one of the, of week, you know, the three weeks to the next council meeting, when we have a workshop that's going to do interviews, would you then add that person to the list?
Sure.
Okay.
We do look to, to the, to the chairman to concur that that's a good idea.
And every time that we have, usually, actually, anyone that's interested in a position, we try to do it as timely as possible.
Okay, so as far, as far as the, the personnel board, that interview is still pending.
Okay.
The, the next item is item H1.
Before we go any farther, I just wanted to say, I like to say it every single time, we appreciate the effort, time, energy, and commitment that our boards and commissions give. If you're interested in being on a board or commission, reach out to anybody in the town. We'll walk through what's necessary that you need to know, and we'll help you understand what the commitment levels are. So get involved, and if you are involved, this council says thank you. Thank you, Bill.
The, the next item is item H1. This Councilman Harrisaw provides information at the September meeting regarding the Azavito property. The Director of Community Development would like council to have the opportunity to hear the presentation on the study that was completed on the buildings located at 205 and 211 Fame
I would just make one suggestion for your presentation. It's a little unclear in reading it sometimes, which building is being talked about, and if there is a building you're making a comment on, please designate which one it is.
Hello, I'm Greg Spees with GMI Architects on 412 Fame Street.
Welcome.
And with Ben Bergenholdz, who's a preservation consultant working with us on this, and also from Bristol. And we were, we were asked on an RFP to prepare a study for the two buildings on the waterfront, 205 and 211 Fame Street. And just to start off, it's almost counterintuitive, but the 205 is the building closest to the fire station, and 211, and, yeah, I'm always checking, and 211 is the next building north, going towards State Street. So as we go into it, 205 is the larger of the two buildings, and, and then the, they're both two-story, and both have a footprint of, varies from 800 to 400 feet. So, I'm sure most people have walked by these buildings and understand they're conditioned. And we have some pictures here of them as they stand. So our, our job was to do a historical assessment, to find out the, first, are they historical and, and worthy of restoring? And we worked with the state, and I'm going to have Ben really summarize those findings. The second part of the study is then how to, you know, what to do with them, and I'll then come back and make some comments about strategies for restoration.
Thank you for the opportunity to study these buildings. We, we really enjoyed getting to know them over the last year. And I must say that, first, happy Halloween, because they do look appropriate for New October. But it's been, it's been wonderful to, to get to know them intimately. I think the easiest way for us to, for me to start is, I, I'd like you to look beyond the chipping paint and asbestos siding, and look toward Greg's really wonderful rendering of what these two buildings could potentially look like. We were asked to determine whether or not these were historic and contributing to the historic waterfront, and we think that they are. The John Gladding House and Store underwent a series of design changes over time, like most buildings, but they represent two of the few remaining small-scale commercial buildings that once filled this densely packed area of town. This represents early Bristol's link to maritime trade, and serves as a rare glimpse into the town's pre-industrial economy. They were built by John Gladding at the central of Bristol's commercial activity during that time. The first building is, served as his residence and store. The first floor was a commercial activity where he dealt in the trade of tin wares and parlor stoves, and he also did tin roofing in town. The second building came about 10 years later and served as space for expansion of his store and thriving businesses. When we look at the buildings, we really wanted to see the character-defining features of the buildings. Character-defining features are the significant attributes that a building has. In this case, we looked at them in terms of how they contributed to the overall street state. They're very close to the street. They're both gabled and into the street. The openings of the buildings all have some wonderful original six-over-six windows. Their scale is similar to each other. So, keeping, I know that, Mr. Harrisaw, you wanted to separate them by address, because it does get confusing, but I think it's important to really keep them as a pair, because the two of them combined really, again, creates that link to the past. And inside, we found some, some character-defining features as well, specifically more so in number 205 near the, the fire station, especially on the first level, that has some really wonderful chamfered posts and some Greek Revival woodwork on the second floor. That being said, we were then asked by the state to come back and develop some strategies for moving forward and what potential reuses could be here. And we thought that the best approach for that would be something called the mothball strategy, which is used often in preservation. And what that is, is basically securing the building on the outside and restoring it. So it, it, it does away with the appearance of blight until an appropriate reuse can be found. That's, that's good, and then, and then develop further on the inside. So with that said, Greg has more information on cost figures as well as how to restore them.
So, uh, as we, as we found the buildings able to be restored, in other words, they weren't too far gone, they weren't, uh, I mean, they, we had structural engineers and cost estimators come and size up, and this is after the state had, had really deemed these valuable contributing elements to the waterfront and to the historical district, and I think goes without saying, to the historical tourism that Bristol really hangs its hat on. And I think, uh, once that decision was made to restore, you know, that the restoration was really in, met the objectives of the, of the waterfront, the historical, and, and even the open space requirements, we then set about to get, to see what the strategy would be and what it would cost. And I, and I, but I bring this up because we did talk about what, you know, the options, and then we did explore the options, the option of tearing them down. What happens when you tear it down? Well, you lose the history forever, you know, and you can't go back and rethink that. The open space of that part of the harbor and with the current sort of thinking of the harbor sidewalk and those sorts of things would be tough to maintain with, if you did tear them down and put them out for development, because, and I've worked with a lot of real estate development with public-private and things, to put this out as a, an RFP for developer with blank land would, would use almost all that land. In other words, it would be very hard to make that economically viable without expanding the footprints beyond what they are now, and the scale and the density of the site would be changed considerably. So that being said, we said, how, how can we make it economically viable to restore these? And the strategy, we get, we, we found the cost. The cost to restore these buildings involves stabilizing the foundations, so, and that's really best done, they really sit, one just sits really, uh, almost on grade without a foundation, so the idea really is to temporarily lift these up and re, and build real frost-free foundations and then set them back down again. It's done all the time. It's about $10,000 to $12,000 each building, and, and that is the proper way to restore a building like this to, for longevity. Then, once you set that up, you go about sistering and restoring the walls and the floors and the, and the inner structure and the roofs. The roofs are actually, the roof structure is in pretty good shape, we would, but it gets to a point where the estimates were coming in around, oh, for 205, the larger of the buildings, maybe 600, it could be $600,000. The smaller building could be 400, something like that. And for this town to take this on was, became, became a burden, and it also was even more difficult because what are you restoring it to? What use? So the question came, the town doesn't really want to be the developer, town doesn't want to be a landlord, and the town really doesn't want to even get involved in day-to-day maintenance. So a strategy was developed with the mothballing as the first phase, and what you would do is you would, and this is a fairly well-known public-private strategy, is that what the town can do best is to get them restored on the outside, because these are the parts of the development that our banks find onerous. Restoring, there's abatement, there's some asbestos siding on 211, and there's lead paint and these sorts of things. And so for developer to go private side funding, those things have become somewhat of deal breakers. What we've been working with the state on is the state would assist us in getting grants for, to restore these, and then in that way, fix the exteriors and abate them and restore them to the state's standards and the Department of Interior's guidelines. And this would bring them back. And the, the biggest difference would be to add, bring back the storefront on 205, which was always there with a center door, and on 211, move the door, the, this door that is sort of out of alignment with the windows, move it over and bring those in. But those are relatively reasonable ways. And what we do then is now you have a very marketable building, two shells, to then put out to developers. The developers then come in and do the fit-out. And the fit-out is a much easier package for developer to, to get finance, all, a lot of the risk has been abated by the town. So we've made them developer-friendly, they can come in, and then at that point, they can program the different uses. We looked at the codes and, for example, if you kept residential on the top, you might not need to do a lift or an elevator, but if you did office, you would, but the economic gains of those rents and things were justified, and that's really up to the developer to develop a strategy for what the use is. And this takes us off of the town responsibility of sort of setting that up. So really what we'd like to say is, this is, in a public-private partnership, you let the public side do what it does best, which is get the grants and abate it and stabilize them and, and maintain the historical core and of the, of the waterfront, and then let the developer do what they do best, which is really, uh, deal with designing and fitting it out to the most economic viability, highest best use, given those envelopes that we prepared for them. So that's the strategy as, as we see it. And I think, given the two phases of it, the first phase would be then to fix it, fix them up, stabilize them, and get them ready for development. Meanwhile, we know the Phase 3 Belvedere, State Street work, the Bristol Maritime Center are all coming on, online, onboard. So at about the time these get finished, the market area is going to be very attractive to developers. There'll be two precedent-setting building complexes already in place and a certain momentum going. So we like the chances of having a very robust RFP to the developers, and these would be then prepackaged for them.
Talk to this council about, you said grants from the state. So what kind of grants are available, and at the end of the day, what kind of costs are involved to the town if we saw the value of doing such a thing?
I, I want to maybe defer to Diane, she's been doing this more, but a lot of times these involve matching grants and, but the state is sort of, you know, in, in, in sort of requesting that we restore them is sort of obligating itself to, as, as assured us they were going to do everything they can to get these grants. There are grants available, and, uh, once it has this kind of consensus of the town and it fits the comprehensive plan and it fits the overall goals, then I think these things are enabled.
So help us understand, first is, what's the cost of mothballing it?
I think the, the cost of mothballing is more like about $700,000. So 300, about 3, 350 for the first and then about 250 for the smaller building, and you go, you've got some architecture engineering fees in there and things like that. But then where we generically said be about a million to do the two, if we tried to do it like some kind of a generic vanilla interior, we're taking that out and just doing the exterior, letting the developer, the developer would end up putting much more than what we were originally estimating on the inside, because it'll be built to suit, could be, I mean, could even have, you know, cafe or, or other kinds of things, so it could have a lift in there. So the, the fit-out on the inside could, uh, between the two buildings, go from 400 to upwards of 800, depending on the developer. So I think the net value goes up with this strategy. If the town tried to do it all, we'd end up sort of producing a sort of vanilla building because we didn't really know what to do with it. And I think this way, you open the doors for much, much better economic use, higher, better use.
So, so a couple of things. So we're talking about potential grant, grants plural. Now, those grants are potentially 70/30, 50/50, something along that line, so $350,000 approximately. So we mothball it. What's the turnaround between, from mothball to it's attractive for an RFP? So from the moment it's done and buttoned up and safe from the weather to, you know, in the timeframe that you've painted, how long are we holding on and spending that money to then potentially, if this council saw the value of it, of, of selling it?
I think, I think when the cost estimator came down from Boston, he was using worst-case scenarios, right? That's, that's what determined this number.
Yeah, these are conservative.
These are very conservative numbers.
Conservative on the bad end?
On the bad end.
Yeah, upside, upside. Worst-case scenario. We find more rod or something.
I think you can't find a better location in Bristol. I mean, if you stand back there and look out, you're, you're, you're seeing Bristol. It's incredibly beautiful. I don't think it's going to be hard to find a developer to come in and finish up what the town starts.
It's funny, because you don't know what's in my head right now, but when we said yes to this, this was, I, I didn't want to develop it. And honestly, I just heard these numbers and I don't even want to develop it that much more now. I've got to be honest. This is not going the way that I thought it would. You're absolutely right. My picture, and I don't know what my colleagues think, but my picture was, is that one or both of these buildings wasn't there anymore. Now, if there's historical, excuse me, historical significance, maybe they can be moved. Maybe somebody else would, would find historical significant, I'm not speaking for the council, I'm speaking for myself, but to get to that view that you just spoke of, to open that up.
Well, their significance is their, their location where they are. I think that's what makes their significance.
So that would be the point, because, I mean, I think when we bought that, we bought it for the land value.
Right.
And so, I mean, if we were to, you know, do this, this sort of hybrid project that you're talking about, when you say developer would come in, I mean, are you saying a developer would come in and buy the, the building from us and redevelop that? Or would we be a long-term lease?
Yes.
And retain the ownership, right? So it'd be more similar, this isn't really a good analogy, but more similar is like the schools, where we have, we own them, we kind of manage them, but, you know, people have kind of fixed up their own little space. You know, it's not a great analogy, but it's something like that. Because you would, if you did, if you did sell it, and even if we could, if you did sell it, you're buying a building with no land at all. You know what I mean? So, I mean, we have, is there precedence where any of this has been done before, like a particular project like this, that the town has bought property and then with the, maybe anticipation of doing away with the, with the structures and then ended up keeping it because of the historic significance or whatever, and then the developer comes in and kind of does it? Can you, is there something that pops in your mind that we might be?
These are done frequently, and the best one that comes to mind, which is a much larger scale project, is Daniel Hall of Boston.
Okay, so that's a city-owned?
That is. Private developer has, I think it's a 99-year lease.
Right. Well, I'd like to say, I think your report and your presentations are very interesting. After reading the report, I was thinking of coming to this meeting with a suggestion that we retain 205, the larger and more original one, and tear down the other one to the north. But I'm very interested in your historic comment that they're perhaps more intriguing historically, kept as a pair. And of course, probably for even less money than you speak of, we could repair the horrible situation of the street facade there, that covering the lower story is awful. And to deal away with that and fix the windows and have the front looking good would be something you could do for less money than the entire mothballing. A little bit like in Russia, you know, they, in Moscow, they have all the fronts of the buildings good and they don't bother with the back because they don't want anybody to go in and look at them. I'm not sure that's a good example, but at least that's the way it is. Financially, it's a, it's a big problem for us unless Diane can work her miracles and get us a lot of grants. But to spend, well, I'll give you a little history. I turned down an opportunity to buy those, that property 35 years ago for $25,000.
Oh, you should have done it. Definitely should have done it.
How to take that?
We bought it, we bought it for about 15 times a couple of years ago. But for us to spend more than twice what we paid for the property is something we have to think about quite a bit. And of course, the answer to that is the scoping we enter into, as you've well described, and the possibility of the grants. But my own thinking is that, contrary to my original thinking, we should retain some of the history of that, even though that South Building is a simple design, it's almost like a Monopoly game form. If that was what was done at the Civil War time and was a significant part of the Bristol waterfront, I think it is worth preserving. So I'd like to suggest to the council and the public and all of you that we consider putting our resources into the South Building and not having the North one. And I'll make one other comment in that regard. We bought this property with the idea that it was an opportunity to, um, make continuity of the town-owned properties in the waterfront. The town owns the old armory on the south, it owns the very attractive Fire Memorial and the very attractive Rockwell Park. The town owns the fire station, and then we jumped the floor to own the State Street Pier. So this establishing continuity is a good thing for the ultimate boardwalk and all of that. But then the question, of course, is what do you do with it? Well, it could be landscaped into another park. And another thing could be done on a temporary basis is to use it as a parking lot. And the other day, when there was no place to park there, I drove in between the fire station and the 205 building, and it's wide enough to do that. I don't think it's wide enough to drive between the buildings to go in. But when you went, once you got in there, there were some other cars there, one by one of the assistant hoppe masters, and we could use it as a parking place until such time as we can afford to glamorize it as another one of Walter's parks. But I'd like to suggest the council consider a compromise of retaining and putting our resources into the South Building 205, but helping ourselves financially and maybe not historically by considering taking down the smaller North Building.
Just to pick up where Halsey left off. I live in a historical home, so I can appreciate the value of these historic properties, but when I think about the taxpayers' dollar and the value and the investment in these buildings, I'm not completely convinced. And when I look at the, the report from my colleagues on page 36, there's this extensive wood failure in studs and sills, there's asbestos, there's mold, there is, you know, termites, there's lead problems. I'm just, I'm worried about if it's going to turn into a serious money pit and, you know, putting the Bristol taxpayer on the, on the hinge for this. And I'm just, I'm a little skeptical at this point, so maybe you can talk about the mothballing with me a little bit more, because it seems like it shores up the houses, but it doesn't do anything for the interior at all. So we'd still be on the hook for that, and as far as grants go, they could, we could get them, we could not get them, but, you know, working, working with this administration, we've been very successful getting them, so I'm not worried about that. But I'm just not convinced that they are of, of value, but maybe you can talk me through that a little bit more.
So I, I'd like to go back to what Mr. Harrisoff had mentioned. It's 25 years ago, we could have bought those buildings for $25,000. Well, in 25 years from now, people are going to look back and say, wow, the town of Bristol could have done something for $500,000 to these buildings? That's a possibility. That's a possibility.
Very, very good point.
When it comes to mothballing, though, that would take care of all of the interior as well. It would, it would mitigate all of the failed plaster, all of the mold, all of the, basically just leave a shell for a developer to build out exactly how he wants it.
Once you do the abatement, it's the whole building. So both buildings. There is an economy of scale in doing both. At this, in other words, if the abatement cost will be, oh, let's just, I don't have it in front of me, but let's just say, those were done, the estimator took these as, by the way, I, I was a proponent of tearing one down and keeping one as well. But I sort of, I see a better, I see the ensemble as a little more representative of the street, and I don't think you'd get it back. But I do, we did ask the estimator to consider them separately, as if one or the other might be done and not combine them. So the, the estimate is conservative. But the reality is if you abated both of them, there would be an economy of scale because the same abatement company would be doing it at once. And good likelihood that, that those abatement costs would go down 20% or something like that on each unit. So there is something to be said for keeping them that way. In other words, then the value is that the two are back, you know, as an ensemble. And I think the economic payback is the rent, the lease that you get when you package them. And again, like they say, they're not making coastal property anymore, you know. It, you're, you're in a good spot to get a very good lease. I think once they're fixed up. And it's very attractive to the banks because again, we have done the heavy lifting.
And you're saying we're in about $700,000 for just the mothballing, but then it would be another, another four, 500?
Well, that would be put in by the developer. That would be part of their, that wouldn't cost, that wouldn't be by the town.
Okay.
That would be part of their fit out. This is, much like you would do with any commercial building.
Can you?
You give them the shell, they put in the rest. And you own it. At the end of the day.
But can you flesh out that arrangement a little bit? I, I don't quite understand that. I mean, I think we, we don't want to sell these structures, but how do you, how do you deal with a developer? Do you rent it to them or what?
Long-term lease.
But if you do rent it and they spend a lot of money to fix it up, they have quite an incentive to stay there.
We did this in Santa Monica. Well, the long-term lease, a 99-year lease or 50-year lease are considered to, it's almost the same as a sale. In other words, you're really owning it.
But what if the landlord doesn't?
And so at that point, it's, it's the same as, it's almost the same as buying it, except the town retains ultimately the control.
What, what seems to me is a possible problem that is, I, I have a bit of real estate and I don't like every one of my tenants. Supposing you gave a opportunity to fix it up and you didn't like the way they fixed it up, suppose you?
I'm sorry, that was funny.
Suppose they didn't pay the rent? Suppose you didn't want them there? I mean, it could end up a mess if you're not careful.
Oh, yeah. We, well, the, my experience with these, in other towns is you have a very strict deed restrictions on the, on the leasehold. And you have, you have, both, you know, even on the inside, town has a right of review. And so there, you have, you can write in the controls that we feel we need. I mean, these are, they're done CCNRs kind of thing, conditions and restrictions. But I think you could, you could compose that the way you want. I think we have the ability and the market strength to call your shots.
Mary, you had a question?
I have a few questions, and that is, so, just to be clear, state preservation said we can do anything we want with it and we could take it down, but they prefer that we keep them there? Or they said we should keep them there?
Yeah.
So there's option of taking one down and keeping one. It's really not an option technically because we would have to get some approvals by them to take it down? Is that correct?
Yes.
So, so the fact of the matter really is, in reality, is that we will have to address both of them. And they don't want us, they will probably not approve us unless we make an extensive case to take one down. Personally, I think if we're going to keep one, we should keep two because I just think having one building just standing there by itself does not make any sense to me, especially if those are, I'm not sure that they were meant to be, like sort of mirror images, but they're very similar in that respect. And if you think about the properties along the street and across the street, there's really nothing else like that anywhere around. So just to have one does not make sense. I think that somehow, you know, the way that there's not a lot of space, I mean, how we would work it out so that, you know, the, the public park part of it, I would not favor parking. I know that's a need, but I wouldn't waste, you know, beautiful waterfront space for that purpose. We have some parking already there as, as we know. So I can see the rationale to extend that. But that is, you know, the working dock area. But anyway, I think we'd have to just make it, you know, like just the, you know, the way to draw people down there and to how to use that. And so I would imagine that if we did go this route, you know, there would be most likely retail businesses in the, in the first level. And so that they would be able to take advantage of the outside as well. So if it was a cafe or if it was whatever, then you'd be able to, to do that as well as the public back there. So I, I don't know, like, how invested state preservation will be to really, to want to give grants for this. I mean, do you think this would, of all the projects they have in the state of Rhode Island, is this something that would rise to the occasion of, we want to fund these because otherwise there's no other use for them?
I, I think it would rise to the occasion because they are so unique and really do represent early Bristol and it's tied to the overall.
And I get to tell you, I can, I've had a couple of homes and my friends before we bought them said, what, are you crazy? And so I can see past of all of this, but I, I'm trying to get to the part where we spend $500,000. How long does it take for us to get our return on investment? We're subventing a developer to do, to make money on it. I mean, even a 99-year lease, assuming somebody were to do that, assuming it's attractive. I'm, I, it's, I'm not, it's not, I'm not at a point where I'm saying no personally, but I could, you know, it would take a lot of convincing for me. And I would personally rather say to the state, is, is it possi, if we said we wanted to take it down?
Right.
You know, what kind of okay do we need? I don't, I don't think we need more retail space. I think we have retail space. In fact, we were at the hotel this morning, there was open retail space over there. There's open retail space. Not a lot, but there's, there is some. So it would take me a lot to get convinced that we'd spend taxpayer dollars to get there.
I don't think that that was really part of this study. And I think to determine the ROI would be something that you would have to look further.
Certainly, yeah.
In an additional study of some kind. I hate to, you know, keep throwing study upon study, but I think, you know, it's still really early on here to try to figure out what exactly that ROI could possibly be.
But I think it's, I don't know, I'm trying to understand it. Is it more like basic than that? I mean, that could be up to the developers of what they want to do. And they would have to address market trends. I mean, if we need retail, we don't need retail, retail in the water versus retail on Hope Street, whatever. I mean, it doesn't seem to me to, that much of an issue. I guess the point is, do we have an option with these two buildings or do we not, from the state preservation perspective? I mean, what case would need to be made? And I'm not saying I'm a proponent of tearing them down, but what case needs to be made to them, if any, to do that?
As you would have to fund it, that would be totally the biggest, biggest thing.
What do you mean, that there was no funding to fix these up and there's no other option? So what does it, what would it cost to take them down, for example?
Well, that's a good point. Yeah, there's a cost to take them down. There's abatement and, and all. I, I wouldn't blush it, I, I wouldn't blush it at $80,000 or to, just to clean the site and take them down. A hundred wouldn't surprise me. So.
Okay.
So, I mean, if you, just one quick thing. So if you had, say it was 600,000, you're saying 700, but it seems to me that, so even 700,000 and they went on a, on a 50-50 grant, let's say.
350.
So that's 350. And then it's like 250 because we still spent 100,000 to take them down. I mean, what, what did we have for the armory? Is it a 50-50 grant or is it 30?
250-50. And I, I was just speaking to Ben because I know when the state was down and we talked about the funding, they brought up the grants and possibility of grants and said that everything, if I recall, they said that everything that we would want to do would be, would be eligible for a grant. And they were really, as Greg said, they were really encouraging us. There's also another federal grant that is.
The Maritime?
Yes, thank you. Maritime, the Maritime grant. And so the state was saying that if we can make any linkage at all with Maritime, we would be eligible to apply for that grant, which can match the state's grant, which would, which would mean, you know, no, no problem.
See, now you're starting to change.
Obviously, the Maritime, I mean, it's right over there with Maritime, our Maritime Center, our working docks. I mean, it's all tied in, I would think. And the boardwalk, yeah, it's all like right in that vicinity. So.
Right.
Well, I have it easy tonight because my colleagues asked most of the questions. I'll probably ask a question that my colleagues won't ask. And I just want to be mindful because I know we refer a lot of our RFPs to our administrator. Was this study funded with grant money also?
Yes.
And my question would be, thank you for the outline you did for us. Ben, I admire your knowledge and work. Are you, do you work for GMI or are you separate and apart?
I was a consultant for GMI.
Okay. Well, I just want to say I thank you for your pro bono work. So.
Yeah, I, I don't mind saying it. It took a lot more time than we ever anticipated. The state sort of doubled the ante. And, but I think it was the right move. I mean, I think we couldn't have given you this decision just with a historical assessment. So we really needed to bring in the additional estimating and engineering. But I think those numbers are very, very solid and comprehensive. And I think, you know, we did our homework. And I think it's a good study for that reason.
I, I agree. I, what we need to do from here is, this was great information. There's no decision that needs to be made tonight, thank God. A joke. For me, if, I think, I think if all we had to worry about was this, then I don't think this would even be an issue as in dollars-wise. I think, you know, there's such value down there in all, like in all of Bristol, to be quite honest. But at this point in time, I think it's probably appropriate that we refer this back to you, Diane, and to look further into what are the true costs? What's the, you know, working with Julie, our treasurer, what's the return on investment? How long does it take to, how much money did we put in? How long does it take to come back? What is appropriate next steps to find out what, now that it is historically significant or 99% historically significant, now what do we do? You know, how do we get our money back from it? What's a good use of the land behind it? How do they work in concert? That kind of stuff. So I would say that we would refer this back to you if my colleagues are amenable to that.
I agree.
And get us some information so we can kind of take a next informed step. Yeah.
Well, I'd like to say, I agree with all that. And I, I think you two gentlemen and your associates have served us very well. And I agree that we needed both the historic input, which I hadn't appreciated, and we needed the development input, which is, as you say, quite specific. It's bringing help to us. So we do need a period of pondering, as they say, about what we should do here and all considerations. And I would suggest, Diane, that while you work on it, maybe you have some informal discussions with some of us so that we can help to build a consensus. And I don't think there's a huge rush. On the other hand, let's do something next year.
I think that's important because I was just like thinking and just doing a quick, you know, like 1,200 a unit, just, you know, like four, top four. And it could be a lot more of other things in there. I mean, you'd be generating about 50-something thousand dollars a year. So I mean, if you end up paying 250, the payback is not that much on that. And it, you know, this location and business, you know, would be significantly more, I think, per, but I was just trying, trying to think, like, what is the minimum that you could possibly get from that? So, right.
I would like to make one other comment, Mr. Chairman. We have on the agenda very soon this issue of renting parking space, quite a high cost. You know, we could possibly make the area in back of these structures temporarily a parking area for which our rent would be zero. So I think we ought to consider that also.
Well, I think as part of the refer back to Diane, we could get your input on that. So could we have a motion to refer this to Diane?
Some.
And there's a second on that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all for the hard work. It's very obvious you spent a lot of time and efforts on this. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is the town council's item H2. This is the administrator's request for a executive session regarding the lease of the Russ Russ property lots. You also have a council consideration from Catherine Fisher and others, several petitions in favor of the renewal of the parking lot lease.
So this would be executive session at the end of our meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
The next is a list of pending issues provided by Councilman Harrisaw, item H3.
Well, I somewhat excuse myself for bringing these all up. But these are matters, seven or eight of them, that I've been involved with somewhat in the past. And I'd like to see some motion. With your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go through them as quickly as I can.
Please do.
Okay. Number one, there's been a request for some street lights to illuminate a very dark Monkey Ranch Lane. One of the motivations to do that would be provide suitable safety and convenience to the Sisters of St. Dorothy property, which borders on the east, Monkey Ranch Lane. And also at the lower end of Monkey Ranch Lane, where it makes a sharp turn over to the west, that's a very, very dark space. So I would like to urge that the town consider two street lights down there. One close to the Sisters and one close to the lower turn. And I know that the town administrator has been working on this issue.
Would you like me to comment on that? Okay, yes. And Monkey Ranch, actually, there are three poles right now. They're fairly new. They were just recently installed to provide electricity for the new property that's been developed there. So they actually hooked up from the south end of Monkey Ranch, the roundabout to the property. So there are three of them. There is pole 11-1, 11-2, and 11-3. All three of those poles are installed in that area. And as Councilman Herschaw pointed out, personally, I think one would be sufficient at 11.2. That probably would cover the wide range in the area there. But that's something I would, you know, impending what type of lighting we use.
It would seem appropriate, and I know that we kind of touched this a little bit, is that we're in the middle, in fact, there's another agenda item coming up.
Yes.
An update about LED. We're in the middle of, of the purchase of our own lights, excuse me, the street lights that are out there right now are Cobra lights. And hopefully to switch those over to LED to save this town a lot of money. It would seem appropriate that this would be on that conversation list and said, do we need a light there? And if we do, let's make sure we got it.
I, I agree. Because what happens is National Grid can install the fixture at no cost. However, pending what type of light we select, we have to pay for that, for that fixture right now. Well, I'm sorry, we pay for the, not for the fixture, I'll take that back. We pay for the consumption. In pending a well-light fixture we put there, it could range anywhere between $196 to $932 per year to the town. That's just for consumption. That's not including the fixture that would be installed at free cost presently by National Grid. However, if we, as you pointed out, we are in a conversation to purchase the Cobra lights. That being said, we would be paying the, the new cost for that fixture come down the line. So there would be an additional cost. And then we have to retrofit it with LED if in fact that's what we're going to go through. So.
I agree with the chairman that this might be a pilot program for those new types of lights. Maybe this is the way we could evaluate them. There was, those are very efficient lights, aren't they? Wouldn't we be much closer to 136 and certainly not the 900?
Yeah, right. Yeah. I think, I think it probably makes the most sense with this, as in all of our lights, to look at this comprehensively. And I think this should be, as Halsey's. be, as Halsey's brought this up a couple of times, it should be high on the list of ones that are considered. I know if my memory is correct, we have about a little over 2,000 Cobra lights.
That's correct.
So of those 2,000, we need to decide whether or not all 2,000 are necessary and can some be removed? Do we need all the 2,000? And if we don't, which ones do we need? And this one should be considered as one that we potentially do need, right?
No, I agree. I think it would be best, even though, I mean, there has not been any emergency, you know, and speaking with the chief, there hasn't been anything that's serious in the area that have concerned that we have to have lighting immediately. So if we could defer this, because, just jumping very quickly, if I may, you know, to the streetlights, which I know Councilman Sweeney has it on the, on the deck, actually, that conversation is coming up, National Grid actually is doing right now, the assessment of the cost. The problem is, why it's delayed now is because more and more municipalities have stepped forward to purchase the streetlights. So now it's taking them longer to calculate the cost. And actually, Walter can speak to that a little bit more. But that's one of the things. So at this point, with that in sight, that December is really the target date for them to get back to us with a price, it may be something that we may want to defer and then include that as part of the package going forward.
To retrofit?
I think that's fine. And we have another meeting in two weeks and then I think the meeting after that, six weeks from now. How much time do you think you'd need to work through this and come back to us on it?
Well, if we go back to, if we wait until December for, to wait for the purchase, I mean, are you suggesting that I go ahead and try to price these? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I think it would be very good if you could come back with a recommendation after some further study. And I'm just sort of asking for your convenience, is two weeks enough or would you rather have six weeks?
But what do you all think? Do you see the need of the light down there?
I, at Monkey Ranch, yes, I do. So we should at least have one down there. But I certainly would bring National Grid down and have them explain, you know, explain to me exactly what would be necessary to do that.
So what doesn't make sense is to probably take this one as an individual, Halsey, and this should be included with the 2,000 or so lights that we're buying when we replace all of our lights with LEDs. So it should definitely be, in my opinion, included with that larger picture, whether it's 2,000 lights or 1,500 lights or whatever we end up doing. It should not be taken as an individual case, but as the part of the total aggregate.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you think it would make sense to continue that item for six weeks until we're meeting in?
I think that's a great idea.
In November or February?
And then have it part of the larger conversation.
I would move that.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Now, number two on my submission is a streetlight on Burnside Street. And I have to admit to you that I have a vested interest in that because that's where my shop and office is. And the town administrator is very kindly going down, looked at it tonight, sent me some pictures and so forth. And as you're urging, I looked at it again this evening. And as you've pointed out, there are lights at both ends of Burnside Street, a light at the junction with Hope Street and one at the junction of High Street. And there are two other lights. But the one that I'm interested in is in a very dark zone and covers a big area. So I'd like to make a suggestion to you, maybe you'd look at. And that is that we eliminate the second light very near the intersection of High Street and replace it with one on the other pole that's in a long segment from Hope Street to the central light. I just saw that out as a possible compromise.
Again, I think that would work in, just what we were talking about with the other ones. I think that's, again, perfectly timed to be included with the larger picture of those, we'll call them 2,000 lights for this conversation. Does that make sense to you?
It does, absolutely. And maybe we could have an understanding that that also be part of a recommendation from you in six weeks.
I have no problem bringing National Grid down and having a conversation to see what the need there as we go forward, to see if that is what we need to do to be included as part of the package. Perfect.
Okay, thank you very much. Item three. I made a suggestion some time ago, which really wasn't my own idea, but I agree with it, that we cut the brush at the south element of Independence Park. Because one of the great advantages of Independence Park is that it's on the water. And a lot, a lot of people use it in the summer. And then now is a little peephole in the middle where those very nice flagpoles are.
Couldn't agree with you more.
If we could get rid of those bushes between the flagpole and Quidos, it would just open it up for more pleasure on the part of everybody.
Open up the view to the harbor that, I think that's a wonderful, wonderful idea.
Would you like, yes. Walter, do you want to come in then?
Yeah, I agree. And I would suggest that, Halsey, you and I meet there and show me what you, what your ideas are. I'll write it up and we'll see what we can do for the next council meeting.
How about tomorrow?
We can bring it on the next council meeting and make a recommendation, if that's okay.
Love it.
I'm available anytime tomorrow if you want to pick me up.
Okay, afternoon?
Yep.
That's a date.
Thank you very much.
Are we, are we just talking about just trimming back the brush? We're not going to be removing that whole?
No, 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 making a larger viewing area than what is currently there, but not removing it.
Because I think it acts as a good buffer for the means that it has. But I will agree that any, you know, cutting it back and trimming it will coincide on a much better assessment of the whole park.
We look forward to what you find tomorrow.
I would also suggest, not just on the south side, but to maybe take a look at the north side and even some of the trees. Because when you're, I mean, the trees are great, but as they're getting bigger, you know, you use it for different things, like even fireworks. You can't really see much like if you're standing, if you're further back. And the other thing I had talked to, you know, Walter about a couple of years ago, is, you know, the idea of putting a couple of benches, you know, along the Thame Street side. Because many people, they just want to sit there, they might want to have ice cream, but not necessarily sit by the ice cream shop. And I think what's happened this year, and I, if they're going to be permanent, then maybe we could come up with something else. But, you know, the barricades, so people have just used them as a way, as a place to sit. So it'd be nice to be able to have like a bench, either a couple of little things, you know, looking at or looking to the water, that you can just go and sit down for a little while. And I think that would be something to take a look at while you're down there as well.
Thank you.
Okay, item four. We're all aware of the fact that we had a very large estimate for the new signage, something, was it $120,000, something like that?
Five times as much as we had budgeted, yes.
Yeah, a lot. But the other part of that whole issue is that I continue to feel troubled and a lot of visitors are, that in the central part of Bristol, let's say from Wood Street to Hope, to Thames, and from like Wallery Street to Franklin, you don't have street signs that read the name of the street in both directions, only in one direction. And I personally would place fixing that problem and having decent signs you can read in either direction is a much higher priority than the new signage, which is all to the good, but it could be spaced out. So I'd just like to urge that we look at a way to get rid of these inadequate street name signs and put something else in that you can read both directions.
Excuse me. Ed Tanner has really made a great effort for us to move along and get that done ASAP. So he is working on it.
How about if we do this? I know we've had this conversation a few times. How about if, not the next meeting, but the meeting after that, if we could have a proposal of completing that? And I know that there is obviously a lot of signage that needs to happen, but maybe two weeks is too quickly, but the, not our next meeting, but the following one, to say, this is what we're going to do, this is when we're going to do it. And this would be our first priority because I don't think anybody disagrees that it doesn't represent us well, so.
Thank you very much. We look forward to that. Number five.
Now, there's 15 left, right? 15 left to go here? Or just?
Moving along.
Okay, all right.
I'll try to keep going. I'm sparing you George Washington's comments this meeting so that I can have this time. A little fade off. Okay, number five. I had a very discussion with the director of DPW this week, last week. And I'm urging a lot of thought go into the strategy of snow removal. Because I think that while everybody worked very hard during that terribly difficult winter last winter, I don't think we worked at it smartly enough. And so I've urged that there be some game plan thought to that whole issue. I think timing of snow removal is very important because what is important is that not only do we work hard during the night as a big snowfall comes, but the next day, when the sky is cleared and the sun is out and the slush melts, it's the time to come forward and sweep it away. And that's true of not only the streets, but it's true of the sidewalks. So I'm just urging the administration and all to think a lot about a game plan. Number six. The paving's been done on Fairview, hadn't it? The temporary paving?
No, it has not. As of today, I drove by there and it has not been done. The, my understanding was they were supposed to be, had been done last Friday. It was not. I did call the rep, Jax Afonso. I spoke with him today and he assured me that he will get.
Kevin's saying he's got an update. Okay.
Yeah, Halsey, also, I sent an email to Jax over a week ago on that. Because the meeting that Tony and I had with National Grid was over two months ago and they were supposed to get to it right away. The only thing I know now is that you probably noticed that they were milling Gooding and Hope, that all that work that they did. And my thought is that they're probably going to do a final course paving townwide, whatever they've milled. And I'm sure Feria will be in it, but I've received no correspondence to indicate that.
Be nice if we could beat the first snowstorm.
We need to.
I'm with you because it's going to make life terrible for us when we plow.
And just to remind everybody, that is not the town paying for that. That's National Grid with the massive amount of upgrades they've done with our natural gas lines. So that's the National Grid's holdup, not the town.
If I may add, I just want to commend Councilman Herschaw because we have to be mindful of the residents on Fairview because they've been dealing with this for quite some time. And they have a lot more to contend with going forward after this. So the more expeditious way we can do this, I think they'll be more relieved.
Agreed.
Okay, number seven. The previous director of Public Works put some little reflectors on that, the dangerous curbing at Lofer's Corner, the corner of State and Hope Streets. But they're not bright enough. And so I've asked the current director if he would see if there's a way to affix something that's a little more visible to that corner. The problem is that when you drive at night down State Street to the west and cross Hope, you're confronted by this extending curvature, curbing. And I don't urge that that be changed at all because we want to leave Lofer's Corner as hospitable as it is. But I think that there should be some way that people can see that they're confronted by an outgoing curb so they can swerve around it in the full light.
Uh, Halsey, you and I had discussed this about a week ago and I did have a chance to look at it. And quite frankly, I'm not quite sure that I understand that there's a problem there. And I was just going to ask the police chief if he was aware of any vehicle operational problems with the curbing and people having a problem negotiating that curb as a result of it being hidden or protruding into the State Street travelway.
What I would ask director is, give me the two week period to the next council meeting and I'll go back and pull some real data. Nothing pops out at me right now, but I'd like to be accurate and give you some information over the last year or so if we've had close calls or if we've had accidents there.
That'll be great. We'll look forward to that. Thank you.
The only reason I do ask that, Mr. Herschaw, is that, you know, we were discussing curb mounted reflectorized delineators. You and I both know that during adverse weather or snow conditions, they're going to be covered. And more importantly, they'll probably get destroyed. And that's why I asked if there was some known traffic condition that may be warranted, a different type of delineator. And that's the only reason I ask.
Well, I think your suggestion of possibly a little signage there, it could be maybe a short post and a reflector.
But keep in mind, whenever, it's, that itself becomes an obstruction as well and that itself will get damaged or destroyed when we do plowing operations. So it's not, there are second and third order effects as a result of your concern. And I just want to make sure we do the right thing. That's all.
Well, I agree with that. And I hope that through the police chief and yourself, we decide whether it's necessary and if so, what we do about it.
Thank you.
Well, my only final thing here is I don't want to go on much longer, is I, I think we should try our best within the means of DPW to do more street sweeping. You know, there are a lot of leaves in the gutter on Hope Street between, even, even between State and Bradford Street. And I just think we've got to try our best to sweep more.
Kevin, nice to see you again.
I got to chime in when it affects the department because right now, we haven't gotten through all of the streets once in town this year. We're working on doing that. So to do streets multiple times would increase the requirements on the department. And we're doing the best we can to hit every street at least once. There are some that are in poor condition that require additional, you know, sweepings throughout the year. And I don't want to get into naming streets, but those that we try to pay a little bit more attention to because they are problematic. Some of those that are in better condition, obviously, you know, the ones at the bottom of the hill that always get the sand and collection of dirt, we try to hit those in an isolated section, maybe not the whole road, so that it doesn't collect as much. And also, most of that ends up in our drainage system, which affects stormwater runoff. So it is problematic and it does also have second and third order impacts. So I'd love to do every street twice a year if we could. That's where we are.
Well, I know you'll do the best you can and maybe we'll keep a little pressure on you anyway.
Thank you. Just what I need. Appreciate it.
So, Halsey, what I heard was number three was at our next meeting, there'd be a suggestion on what brush should be cut at Independence Park. At our December meeting, the street signs in central Bristol, Flot, requested we could get an update about what our plan is to get those taken care of right away. And then number seven was better reflectors. At the next meeting, we would get some, some updates. Is that a motion to that effect?
Yes, I still move.
Okay. Is there a second? So we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The next item, item H4 from Councilman Stewart. This was continued from August 19th, an update on the Tierney Yard Book Project. Tony?
Do you want me to cover that?
Oh, okay, yes.
I just want to see where we stand because the timeline is of concern in how this council administration is going to go forward on this topic. And I know the last we heard was June, all the residents were on board. And then there was a six-month interval from Beta to go forward with Phase Two of the design. And it was stated by Beta that the latter part of February, if things are held up, probably March, they would be able to start construction. With that said, I just want to get an update on the timeline, maybe have Kevin come in the December meeting to see where we stand with our budget and where this council administration would like to go forward with this project concerning the monies and Beta Engineering and their design.
Okay. The, currently, what they've done is they've drafted easements. They have to go to each resident. Next week, Kevin Eggyard, Kevin McBride and myself will be meeting to set a schedule to meet with the residents to go over the easements that are being proposed for each one of the owners. And Kevin will be here, he is planning to be here at the next council meeting and give in-person update of everything else.
In November?
Yes.
Oh, okay. But how, we're on the same timeline that they specified.
At this point, that's correct.
Okay.
That's why we're going to be on a schedule to, to meet with the residents, you know, set a schedule to meet with the residents to discuss the easements, I shouldn't say the residents, the owners, to discuss the easements and see if there's any concerns to address those as well.
And though we're mindful of the timeline, as I stated previously at a council meeting of our projects, we have many ongoing, but they have to be ongoing because that's the only way they get done. And this council has to have a discussion along with our treasurer and the administration, how we're going to proceed with that. Thank you.
So, Ed, do you want to?
I believe the administrator will probably address this in the same manner as Kevin.
We'll just continue.
Well, Kevin will be here on November 2nd. Right. So I would just ask to continue until the 2nd and then you'll get a full report from Kevin.
Thank you. So move to that effect.
Chairman, I make a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
Chairman, I make a motion to continue this to the next meeting.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
And also from Councilman Stewart, item H5, requesting an update on the road improvement program. This is continued from July 29.
Okay. I'd like to report back is that Baloo Boulevard has been done. Landscaping, I believe, is in the process. I know that I was told that they had to do that and I believe it is in process for them to do the landscaping there as well as Butterworth. Those streets have also been paved. So we've finished that phase there with the exception of the landscaping.
It looks wonderful.
They do. I wrote through there this weekend and they do pretty smooth. Not only that, some of the tenants on Baloo Boulevard, they have approached me and said, "Thank you." You know, they're very appreciative of the fact that we took, you know, collectively we took the interest of, you know, repaving the road there.
I want to take a page from Councilman Perella, which, you know, she brought it a good point, which is, and we all believe this, is that that has been like that too long. So we say thank you back to those businesses for being patient with us as it took so long to make it nice, but now that it is, it's appropriate for that area.
They actually are very cooperative with the construction crew to the point of offering bathroom facilities to make sure that they were accommodating, you know, water whenever needed as well. So there, it was quite a collaboration there that it took place to get it done, but they're very appreciative that it has been done.
I also spoke to the business owners and their concern was now that it's done, they just want to just take a look at the pitch when it rains. I said, "Well, you know, we have this problem townwide and statewide. If you're comparing it to a deluge of two inches to four inches an hour, I would imagine that, you know, any road and here in Bristol, we have our share of problems, whether it be businesses or residents. But just to be mindful now that the top coat is done, we just have to keep an eye on the path of the water and make sure there's no settling. Also, I noticed going south from Baloo over to Broad Common, there is a little hump. I just want to keep mindful of if water settles there, that they be accountable for any fixes going forward. But the, as you stated, this was a great opportunity through the state revolving fund and I think we made the wise choice for the best for those businesses over there, so.
But that's not the only road that we did. Can you give us the rest of the?
Of all the other roads that we did on, off Butterworth?
Yeah.
I wish I could remember the whole list of them, but.
Fairmark, Claremont, Cloton. I'm trying my best, Kevin. It'll come back to me.
Unfortunately, I didn't compare it with that list.
Roseland? I think Roseland's down there.
Pataca.
Oh, I forgot Pataca. Give me a while.
Kevin, you, I'm assuming that you've looked at that.
Slow come, slow come. Excuse me?
I'm assuming that you've looked at that, but in result, and how does it look to you?
Yes, I mean, keep in mind that the type of project that we did is not a full road reconstruction. It was a mill and overlay in most instances. Baloo Boulevard was a little bit different because of the magnitude of the impact of the road was broken up. So they went in and they put gravel, 12-inch gravel subbase where they needed to, not changing the road profile because when you start changing the road profile, now you have impacts to adjacent properties and we're cognizant of that. However, some of those things that Councilman Stewart mentioned relative to the grading to adjacent properties, the engineer, design engineer, Beta is aware of that and called that out on their drawings. So Carty is aware of it and they worked in those, the profile on the, on the edge of road, so hopefully it will, it will work according to design.
I agree. I just want to keep a mindful eye out there now that it's complete. Also, I know we were supposed to meet about maybe some extra roads going forward, but as of this past Saturday, weather's creeping up on us with the first frost and we stated that going forward with this program, we want to do everything right, so.
Part of the problem with adding extra roads to the contract was the mobilization process for the contractor. He'd get in and get out of there on the milling side of things, which is the, the expensive piece for him. Very quickly, he did Baloo and all of that road and then jumped over to the other side to do this finger roads off Buttonwood, or Butterworth, rather. And so he wasn't there very long with that equipment. So therefore, you know, the opportunity to add a road or two didn't come to fruition like we had hoped.
Okay. I have residents that reach out to me and they say, "Where's my street on the plan? Where's my street in the plan?" Do I direct them to you, Tony, as far as is the plan complete, as far as the list of roads, when you think you're going to get to them?
We don't have a plan for all of the streets, but we do have a list of all the streets as how they were ranked and graded as of 2012 by Beta Engineering. So if they would like to know where they stand list-wise, you know, how bad are they or how good are they compared with everybody else, certainly you can direct them to me or direct to McBride.
Thank you.
Either one of us.
I think in concert with that, this council's had conversation, I know I've talked to Julie a little bit about it, about looking at what it's going to cost us to have a bond for next year's ballot, to talk about we need to spend money and we can't just do it little pieces like because last year's winter was so difficult. And I'm hopefully not the bearer of bad news here, but it seems that this year may be a very difficult one, too, or at least what everything that I've been reading. So who knows? But I hope it isn't.
I know.
But it was a difficult year. It made roads that were okay very bad. So we went really quickly into a downgrade position. Anyway, long story short, we need to look at doing more with, I think a bond is the answer to do that.
Correct.
Toll roads. Barry's suggesting toll roads.
Kidding, just.
State Street. I just wanted to add one thing as far as next year's program. We submitted our application for the state revolving fund, which the deadline was a week ago, or last Thursday, actually. So they'll be making a decision going forward whether or not we're selected again to, we submitted some roads for that. And Tony and I have also met to discuss next year's road program. And we'll be meeting with Councilman Stewart to discuss that. And then my goal is to establish a road program for the next two years, hopefully within the next few months, for several reasons. One, so we know where we're going within the town, which is very important, but also it's, it's our obligation to provide that information to our public utilities, water and, and gas, so that they can try to stay ahead of us and our roads will last a little bit longer. So we're on the cusp of moving forward for an out-year program. One of the problems is if you try to get to a five-year program, you start getting into the crystal ball because then you know how roads fail over a winter and you've really got to take a look at those and repairing those as well. So I just caution us to try to look five years out, but at least two is good and then I can get that to the utilities and they can work with that.
And I think the public has to acknowledge that the priorities do change year to year on the weather conditions here in New England. And we want to get to all the roads, as Councilman Sweeney had mentioned. And that's why we sit down and go over those priorities. But you made a valid point that even though we can have the crystal ball of even if the bond gets passed and we have the funds, that people, you know, have to be patient and if things change accordingly, it's not because we want to make anybody upset, it's just, as you stated, there's a need. So, thank you.
So, Councilman Stewart, what's your pleasure on your agenda?
I don't know.
Receive and file?
Receive and file at this moment because there's a lot of discussion going forward towards the winter for next year, so I don't see you continuing this. So in the spring, we could put it on to update again, so. Because I'm sure plowing and everything else will come forward, so.
So we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, you have correspondence from the chairman of the Economic Development Commission regarding their recommendation to rename the Department of Community Development. You have a memo, and also a memorandum from the Community Development Director regarding this request.
Diane?
So I did review this request with the solicitor and as I, as I suspected, it will require a charter change, so I recommend that you just refer it to the next Charter Review Commission for them to consider.
I'm just going to tell everybody what this is. The Economic Development Commission suggested that the Office of Community Development's name should be changed to Bristol's Office of Community and Economic Development. An important word and obviously we started this meeting talking about economic development and all that we do. And I thought it was a great idea and I think that when we review the charter as we do every 10 years or so, then we can put this on the list to be seriously considered.
I just want to also share that when we had done the website, you know, we recognized that Department of Community Development isn't really intuitive for people who might be looking for planning, building, zoning or economic development. So we did separate on the website those departments, if you will, or the divisions within the department. And we actually have a heading on the top that calls Commerce, called Commerce, which is all the economic development initiatives within the department and within the town. And then we've got Community Development, which I've termed on the website Planning because that's where most people think when they go for those government services. So we're trying to kind of have a public face that is a little bit more explanatory of what we actually do. But as far as the official name of the department, that needs to be a charter change.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to refer the proposed name change to the Charter Review Committee for Review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
When is that up? When do we need to?
Every 10 years. So the last one was 2010, so you're looking at 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Development might not be such a hot topic.
Family values, again, I think will be.
It's always going to be. It's sort of implied, isn't it? It's always going to be, huh?
Mr. Clerk?
The next item is from the chairman of the Bristol Harbor Commission, Mr. Dominic Franco, requests council consideration for proposed waterfront fee changes.
I asked for the Harbor Commission to, to do this and I say thank you and I know this council says thank you. There's a, obviously a lot of hard work on this. I would like this council to have a workshop along with our Harbor Commission or Harbor Master and interested parties to have greater discussion about this. I don't know how much you looked into this. There was additional information shared this evening and that's why I think a workshop is probably appropriate at this point in time so we can get into the particulars, find out what the comparisons were, why they felt they were comparisons and why they felt what they suggested was the right way to go.
I too would like to thank the Harbor Commission, the Harbor Advisory Commission, the Harbor Master and all the other volunteers that stepped forward to do this. Thank you very much, but because of the extensive information, I think a dialogue amongst our colleagues would be better fitting taking place in a workshop like you stated, Mr. Chairman. So I move that we take the findings of the Harbor Commission on these rate changes and schedule a workshop.
It would be also very important that we do that right away because the fees will, the bills go out in December if my memory is correct, so we want to move right along on this. So we have a motion for the workshop.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Did the council wish to look at dates now?
No, I don't think so, but we can definitely do it right, maybe at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
The next item is from Councilman Stewart and Councilman Herschoff regarding the Heritage Hall of Fame.
Well, Councilman Stewart and I presented a memorandum to the council about a week ago and it's entitled, "A Promising Proposal for Bristol," because this is only at this point a proposal. And what it is, we think is an opportunity for our fine town to enhance itself by also being the host to a very prominent statewide organization. And I refer to the Rhode Island Heritage Hall of Fame. And I've distributed to counselors a booklet, which is a typical one, which comes out every year or so, where a very prestigious event is held to induct into the Rhode Island Heritage Hall of Fame additional people of merit. And the members of the Hall of Fame, which now are numbered in the hundreds, are people who ever since the founding of Bristol have done signal things towards improvements to our town, the state, or significant even nationally. At the suggestion of Bristolian Gail Conley, there's an idea that this organization looking for a home might come to Bristol and occupy the very handsome barn in Colt State Park. And Councilman Stewart and I also submitted with this a picture of this very wonderful building, which is well-kept up but is underutilized. And of course, for us to do that would require a number of permissions, most notable of which would be agreement by DEM or the state government that we have an opportunity to provide that building to this organization. This is not a request for any town funding and to the contrary, if this very prominent organization could be persuaded to have its displays of all the plaques about those inducted and its administrative offices in Bristol, we would have, I think, an added element of interest and opportunity for our town. There would be no financial input by the town and to the contrary, this organization has raised sufficient funding that all the modifications to the building on the interior could be covered by themselves. And there may even be an opportunity if they send it here in Bristol that their associated organization would initiate some donations to Bristol, important functions such as Fourth of July. So I think Councilman Stewart may want to add to what I've said towards introducing this.
Well, I certainly share in the enthusiasm of Councilor Herschoff and I would imagine as an information piece to our colleagues in government, to the residents of the town of Bristol and also the residents of the state of Rhode Island, we believe that this isn't an exploratory stage at this moment. There have been discussions with the state and in no way, shape or form are we looking to displace the DEM. This would still be under the state with their supervision, but it would be a beautiful partnership. And after looking at other locations such as our Capital City or our waterfront Newport and where they get a lot of tourism, I think it's such a compliment and fitting with our historic and patriotic town that we have the asset of the Colt family and this structure. And with this foundation going in and the proposal to the state, it would less burden the taxpayer to keep this building fit because they would take all the responsibility monetary for the refurbishing of this building. So look at it as a positive win-win, not only as the host town for this organization, they are open of discussions and understand the other organizations throughout the state. This is a large-scale building and they're open to conversations of making this just another asset that just complements heritage with the Colt family. Many notable people who have been honored, not only throughout the state, have been many from this town of Bristol, whether it be entrepreneurship, artists, just doctors, people that have made an impact on the state of Rhode Island. And what a better place to have just the accolades and have tourism. And this can also act as a venue for events and make this structure, other than just a Department of Environmental Management office, this will just, just complement everything we've been striving for at no cost to, we have Blithewall, we have Lynn in place, we have Mont Hope Farm. And now we can have the Colt Dairy Farm and the Colt family just as another opportunity and for Bristol to be proud, especially with a notable organization like Councilor Herschoff said. So right now, this is an information piece that we're setting forth for everybody to just be announced that we were recognized for this location. And I think, I think it's an exciting opportunity and as I stated, we just have to look at the covenants and deeds and all the legalities and obviously have the state on board going forward to have this partnership happen. So we will have everyone stay tuned for any other findings going forward.
And by the way, it's interesting to note that Palmeroy Colt has been inducted into the Rhode Island Heritage Hall of Fame, as have quite a few other Bristolians. So I think what we would like to do is to ask the council to initiate some further study of this. And I'm sort of hopeful that eventually we would, as a council, take a position either favoring it or not.
Yes, I certainly agree with Councilor Herschoff that once we have more findings, maybe us representing along with the administration on behalf of its residents in tandem with the state, when that time comes, support this initiative with a resolution. But until we have those findings that can be presented to my colleagues, I think we should just, I don't know, receive and file at this time, Lou, or?
That makes the most sense, yes.
And then go forward when we see fit? Okay.
So we have a motion to receive and file?
Second.
And second, the only discussion I say is, is thank you. It's, sounds like a wonderful opportunity and sounds like you put a lot of work into it and it sounds like it's something that would be beneficial to the town and the state too. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Excuse me, next item is from the associate director, the Natural Resources of Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. Island Department of Environmental Management, informing the council of their findings that a fishing pier at Mount Hope, about their findings of a fishing pier at Mount Hope Ramp.
I spoke with the director, this letter came, obviously, from the director, talking about this fishing pier. There's a fine gentleman in Bristol that asked for more information in regards to this and finding out the feasibility of this, funds available, matching funds, did a lot of work on it, but at this point in time, there wasn't not, it's not a no, it's just that there are priorities that are higher than this at this point in time. And the director pointed out that Bristol enjoys the pier that we have at Col State Park from DEM funds, and she's right, but it's something that we want to keep on the radar, because I think it's a great idea, but it's probably going to be down the road. So we just need a motion to receive and file.
Motion, so moved. Second?
A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Thank you.
The next item, item I five, from Councilman Sweeney, requesting an update on the LED lighting project.
Yes, I know we've gone into the, going towards the lights of savings with this, and I'm just looking to find what the update is on the costs, and where we are with the project, and when do we think we're going to see some progress?
Okay, I just maybe need to be clear, are you talking about the streetlights, or are we talking about the LED lights?
The streetlights and the LED lighting, converting, converting the lights over to LEDs.
The Cobra lights, the streetlights?
Correct.
Okay, I'll let Walter take lead an hour.
Last Thursday, I attended the Gillette Stadium, the Energy Efficiency Conference that was put on by the grid, and had lengthy conversations with one of our contact people regarding where we stand, regarding, the bottom line is, we need the bottom line. We need to know how much, how much the cost of purchasing those lights are going to be. What has happened is, a lot of other communities have lined up behind Barrington and Bristol, and Providence is very interested, Central Falls, I mean, the list goes on and on. So what has happened is that department has tripled in size to meet the need of getting all the surveys done and the accurate bottom-line list. Jerry has assured us that we, that Barrington and Bristol are at the top of the pile, and we're going to get our.
And this is not a national grid, correct?
Pardon?
This is national grid you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so they're projecting that, probably because of the workload, that we're looking at the end of, end of December, middle to the end of December before, they're going to be able to provide us with the information that we require to purchase the lights, is how much this is going to cost.
Till end of December, we'll know that, and then we can take the next informed step.
Then we'll take the informed step of purchasing them, and then, once we purchase them, we've, what we're doing right now is we're developing an RFPQ for the maintenance and the, maintenance of the lights. And the National Grid has hired a consulting firm to assist the municipalities in providing a really good RFPQ. We've pretty much finished that, and all the other towns are waiting to use ours as a model for theirs. So we are meeting with this consultant to make sure that it is, it is foolproof.
So we should have the information by the end of December, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, we'll be prepared. If all goes well on the grid side, we'll be able to, you know, provide that final number at the end of December, by the end of December.
You actually forgot to share something, because you went to that event at Gillette Stadium.
Yeah, it cost, it cost $125 for me to go to that conference, but I had to stay there until four o'clock, because at four o'clock, they gave me a certificate for 10% off our next purchase. Our next purchase.
About $2 million, right?
Hopefully, will be the lights, and that will represent, not to exceed $10,000.
Thank you, Walter.
So we're going to be getting $10,000 right off the top.
Nice return on investment.
So that's.
Thank you for staying.
Till four.
To receive and file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the periodic report from the Recreation Department for Camp Pappasqua in September 2015. That's item K1.
Walter? Did you want to share anything? There's piles of good news here. How about you take two minutes and tell us all this good news?
Sure, it's, it's all in the report, it's a lengthy report.
Just give us two or three highlights, how's that?
We had an exceptional year, we, 658 kids went through the camp, and coming out of the summer camp, if I, one highlight is, we have the finest police department that there is in the country, undoubtedly, in my.
What do you need from the chief, sir?
I have a couple of tickets that I need fixed. Their presence, their, the relationship-building, comments that I got from not only parents and kids, but other community leaders from our neighboring towns. One particular comment was, what's going on? What's the problem? And I said, why? And they said, the police are here. And I said, they're here every day. They're building relationships with the residents, they're helping unload the kids from the cars, they're making sure people are safe, they're giving us consultant work and interactions were nothing but superb. I saw changes in the attitudes of the children to, they ran up to the police instead of running away. It was just phenomenally good. It is every year, but this particular year was outstanding, and I want to thank the chief for his amazing help. And we had two or three guys there, sometimes they stayed all day, sometimes they did bike, bike services. We, I got a phone call from the Rhode Island Department of Education, the Summer Lunch Program, congratulating us for not only having, feeding, serving more free, healthy lunches to more kids than any other, any other camp or place in the state, but we served more than anybody else in the history of the program. And they've subsequently asked me to, they want to have a retreat celebration, which is going to be next month, and they asked if they could do it at the new Quinta Gaiman Community Center.
Wow.
So we're going to host all the communities in the state and talk about the value of free, healthy lunches for the kids during the summer. So all in all, it was very stressful, very, very busy. We really need to look at that seriously into next year. Our numbers have really grown very, very high, and it's worrisome. We had the value of EPCAP, East Bay Community Action Program, where we were able to get 20, 20 hours a week staff that Sarah and I interviewed, free of charge. They paid for it. So we were able to beef up our counseling staff to be able to handle the great numbers of kids that we have had. But all in all, everything went beautifully, and I, again, thank you, thank the council for its tremendous support on the lives of the children and families in Bristol, it's outstanding, and thank you.
Well, we congratulate you on your success, this is wonderful. Nice job, chief, in your department. I've talked to, in fact, we had a letter that we all received, and actually Halsey read it a couple of meetings ago, singing the praises of what happened there. That's, there is no one reason why Bristol's a wonderful place. This just happens to be one of those reasons of what makes Bristol what Bristol is. So we say thank you, nice job.
Well, it's just a great report, and so satisfying, and without doubt, you've got the best recreation program anywhere in the state of Rhode Island. And I take my hat off to you and keep it going, make it better every year.
Thank you, Walter, and with that, I make a motion to receive and file. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Aye.
Thank you.
He also provided, item K2, the periodic report from Alan Klepper of the Water Authority.
Make a motion to receive and file. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Then all speak at once.
Next, we have individual council member, agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
Couple of quick things, we started this meeting off with a new member of the team with Community Development, a moment of conversation on that. If you're a current business, and you have some questions about expansion, or process, or policy, Diane is one, is the head of the team, but Diane is one of the team members. So Ed Tanner is one, and obviously Jessica, how do we say Jessica's last name?
Flammer.
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 Flammer, okay, so Jessica Flammer. Jessica's one of three people of that team, Diane's one of three people of that team, Ed's one of three people on that team. So you're starting a new business, what do you do? Do you come into Town Hall? What should happen is, yes, you can come into Town Hall, but then you should be immediately talking with Diane, or Ed, or Jessica. And why? Because they understand the larger picture of where you're going to be, what do you need to be concerned about? For example, are you down in the Historic District? Do you need to worry about signage issues? Do you need to come in front of the Historic District Commission for approvals on things? What's the correct process? And that's a new business, that's a current business, it's a business coming from another community over here, that's a business coming from one side of Bristol to the other side of Bristol. So that's why we're here, we're a service industry, that's what the town is. So you come to us when you have a question, and we're here to help you. So if you're opening up a new business, or you know somebody wants to open up a new business, or you're in business currently and you want to take steps forward, then reach out to us. That's why we're here, that's why this team is in place, and if you're not sure about it, then you can reach out to any one of us, and we'll point you in the right direction. Sunday, from 1:00 to 3:00, is the Halloween Walkabout, which is just a wonderful thing. Last year, we stood at the table, and I know, I bought 15 bags of candy, and I think the people standing next to me bought at least 15 bags of candy, and we got inundated. There's usually about 10 kids, side by side, walking down, grabbing candy. It's a wonderful experience, it's just another thing that makes Bristol Bristol. It's an opportunity not only for the kids to walk around and show how great they look in their costumes, but it's also to, we can frequent our stores downtown, and in all of Bristol. So, you know, Bristol's not just downtown, there are stores on Medicom Ave, there are stores on Gooding, there's stores all over the place. So, but on Sunday, 1:00 to 3:00, come on downtown, and adults can wear costumes, we'll give you candy too. But come on out, it's a wonderful experience, it's a great and pleasurable experience. So, thank you.
Mr. Sweeney.
I just wanted to let everybody know, believe it or not, Christmas is around the corner. I'm sorry to say, it's been a quick year. I know, I can't believe it, but Bristol Fire Department and the Ladies Auxiliary will be hosting a fundraiser to benefit the East Bay Food Pantry and the Community Aid Fund. So the mission of the East Bay Food Pantry is to feed and clothe as many needy people in the East Bay, and the Community Aid Fund is to create, it was created this year to benefit the families or individuals in the community that have suffered a loss due to a fire, a tragic event, or illness. The event will be held at Judge Roy Bean on State Street on Saturday evening, November 28th, from 5:00 to 9:00. We are asking the Bristol community to bring non-perishable food items, gently-used winter clothing, a new unwrapped toy or cash. Donations will benefit the East Bay Food Pantry. They're calling it "The Boot," will be passed around to collect change or cash for the Community Aid Fund. So there's kind of two separate things going on. It's a fantastic way to give back on the Christmas season, and enjoy special sightings of Santa Claus will be there, heard he there scheduling, hopefully he can squeeze us in, but I'm sure he'll make it. And Ryan and Tyler Alcoa, excellent local town band, they'll be there, and Gravity will be performing too. So there'll be a lot of fun, fun events. So mark your calendars, again, November 28th, from 5:00 to 9:00. Have a safe Halloween, enjoy, enjoy the candy, don't get sick. Take care.
Ms. Perella.
Thank you, sorry, I'm a little bit of, middle of an allergy attack here, it seems like, but I just wanted to, speaking of lighting, I don't know if it's more appropriate for me to bring this up, or the neighbors. Neighbors have not spoken to me about it, but for my own driving in one area, I think it's very dangerous, and that is, the Casey Drive, as you make the curve around up to Lisa Lane, it's really, really dark there, and I just feel like, you know, you could easily end up in a gully. Casey Drive, as you're going, the end, as you're going around to Lisa.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that that's something that needs to be checked, I've been down that way a few times, and it just, I just really feel like it's dangerous, it's very, very, very dark. And you know, the road also goes down, you know, Casey kind of goes around, and then it kind of goes down also. And I just feel like someday someone's going to end up in a, like, in a gully in that, by that curve. I wanted to wish a very happy birthday to our friend Manny Aruda. Manny just celebrated his 102nd birthday the other day.
That's worth a round of applause.
Yeah. He's a.
You know, Mary, there used to be a cane that went to the oldest resident, but that's gotten lost, I believe.
Oh, maybe, yeah, probably did. Should maybe.
If anybody in the audience knows where that honorary cane is, you ought to come forward and let us know, because it really should be passed around to these 100-plus years old.
Yeah, it's amazing, he's remarkable man, he's an Air Force veteran, very, just a lovely man. Tony and Jackie and I had the opportunity to, he lives at the Veterans Home now, to celebrate with his family. Tony knows him from his neighborhood, and I call, and I know him from what I call my church neighborhood, because he and I sat near each other for many, 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 many years. So, so it was just a wonderful and nice feeling, it just, it was very happy to be there. And then I guess finally, I would just like to wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween. It's a trick-or-treat, it's on a weekend, I believe, so it's going to be probably lots of, lot more people out, and just to be careful. And the event downtown this Sunday is always a fun and cute event to witness, and to participate in, so thank you.
Mr. Stewart.
Well, I've been quiet past couple of meetings, so I have quite a few items. To talk about Councilwoman Perella and the administrator being Sunday, I'll just, since you brought it up, to wish Manny Aruda a happy birthday. It was an honor, and on behalf of our Director of Parks and Recreation, along with his assistant Sarah Klein, to attend the Bristol Sports Complex, where Walter worked with the Maderas family for the tribute of their daughter, and to bring awareness to domestic violence. There's a beautiful park bench overlooking the softball field, which Marielle and Maderas used to play. So it was a very nice ceremony, along with our administrator being there, and we thanked them and their family for donating that park bench to our park. It was very nice and fitting. Also, Councilman Sweeney had mentioned a couple of events, he had brought up Bruma Palooza last council meeting, that is right around the corner on October 30th, and at that event, you can purchase tickets to Linden Place, they have a couple of events coming up, but at this event, at Bruma Palooza on October 30th, Friday, our town administrator Tony Texier, along with Stan Dimmick, Bob Vanderhoof, and Heather Savoy will be honored part of that fundraiser for the flowers downtown, so congratulations. And you also can purchase tickets at Linden Place, that puts all our restaurants during East Bay Food Week on display, along with entertainment of the Taste of Bristol, which is a very active day this coming Sunday after the Walkabout. You can go to Linden Place and purchase tickets for that event as well. You can go to Linden Place and purchase tickets for that event as well. I'd just like to reflect and congratulate once more. We attended on October 8th, Sold Out Jackie's Galaxy. I know the business is in Warren, but they employ so many throughout the East Bay, even from our town. They're such a reputable, when we learned about the history of the Taylor Box Company, and how they stay in this region, also affects our town of Bristol, economic-wise. So, they were the Business of the Year at the East Bay Chamber Awards Night. So congratulations to them, and congratulations to the East Bay Chamber member, Mark Devine. And last but not least, the Man of the Year, which is our own Jeff Rashad of the Lobster Pot. It was a very nice evening, and congratulations to their new chairperson of the East Bay Chamber, Michelle Cotright. We wish her and her board much success going forward throughout the year, working with our organizations. Speaking of that, they just recently had, as our new Economic Development Coordinator mentioned, a business tour, and the East Bay Chamber just finished theirs, along with my colleagues. And there's another business leaders tour on Wednesday, November 4th, from 12:00 to 2:00, in conjunction with our EDC and the Bristol Warren School Department, with all business leaders. So, things are ongoing in the right direction. And speaking of the school department, we got good news from Dr. Maury Andrade, our superintendent from the state, part of our School Building Authority, which myself and the administrator are part of the Buildings Project Committee for the Bristol Warren School Department. I would like to compliment Dr. Andrade, Pauline Silva, and George Simmons, because we just secured $1.3 million for that capital fund program from the Governor's Initiative and the Council of Education. And Ride and the governor complimented our school department, and everyone who works hard, along with this administration and our residents, to be proud of securing the most funds out of that going forward, to keep our schools updated and repaired. This is the way to go. We're very proud of that. This past budget, this council, along with Warren, on the Joint Finance Committee, as of late, all we talk about is economic development, as Councilwoman Perella stated, and with our presentation of Jennifer here tonight. And there's been discussion on the future of the workforce, and we're very fortunate that business leaders here in Bristol are recognizing that, and are already stepping up to have the internship programs come to their businesses. And we're very fortunate for other trusts that give the students an opportunity to see what their career path is going to be, because this not only works good for our students, it works good for our future of our workforce and our employment here in this nation, and here in this state. And if I may, just real quickly, in the Providence American Journal, we're relating to the STEM program, which the Joint Finance Committee felt the need to support and fund that initiative of our school department, to extend that initiative amongst their students here in Bristol Warren. And the Textron Charitable Trust sponsored some boys and girls who are part of this program down in Florida. But just a quick note of going forward, what we're all talking about when we get together, the U.S. Department of Commerce found that positions in the STEM fields are on the rise. One report estimates that by 2018, 8 million U.S. jobs will be available in these fields, relating to STEM. However, the report also indicates that American employees will be largely unprepared for these jobs. And this is why I'm stating here tonight, that it is very important, we're taking an active role here, not only in our East Bay region, but to the Governor's Initiative throughout the state. This program is successful, and that the students who attended now have future-oriented mindsets since returning, having that someone to define career paths and opportunities is essential for our young people. We are preparing them well for the high demand and high-wage careers that they can enjoy in the career path that they take. Investing in inspiring young talent is an investment in our communities, where we live and work. We are creating a talent pipeline for our state's workforce. So with that, I think I covered enough, and I just want to wish everyone a safe and happy Halloween, and your families. I want to thank Mike Davis, Sergeant Abrams, Archie Martin, and everyone who attended here tonight, and everyone watching at home. Thank you.
This evening, at this good council meeting, we've heard a number of very encouraging commendations to Bristol activities, notably recreation, but other good things that we have, and that we are seeking to add to the repertoire in Bristol. I think, though, we ought to make sure to recognize the activities of our harbor. This was a very good boating year. Walter's referred to that somewhat. And we had the head of the Harbor Commission in the audience here this evening earlier. And of course, we've got a distinguished harbor master, Greg, here. And Greg, it would be really good if we could put together a little report of the season, a little bit along the lines of what Walter's done, because this is really a good boating year, and you, each year, seem to add better activities towards it, improve floats, improve docks, improve process. One time this summer, I even received a very friendly admonition to slow down my powerboat coming up into the harbor. That was, to me, okay, and a good example of the things you do.
We're putting a report together. We'll probably have it ready for the next council meeting. I heard about it right away. They called me, just so you know.
Well, I'm glad that the--
We got to tell somebody to slow down today.
--organization reports up to you, and--
So, but we're putting it together now. We're putting all the numbers--
What if I break the speed limit in the sailboat? Is that still not good?
Listen, if you're breaking the sailboat, then we'll still write you a ticket. You'll get one warning.
Hard to slow them down. But I certainly was guilty in the other case, and I'm glad that they told me.
We'll put it together for you.
That's great.
No problem.
That's all I have.
Town Administrator Agenda Items.
I really don't have a whole lot to say, other than happy Halloween. However, I would like to defer to Chief Canario to give some tips about safety for upcoming holiday.
Thank you. As everyone knows, it's going to be on Saturday, so it will be a little busy. We have people that'll be traveling to restaurants and out and about. What we'd ask is that we have the parents think bright. Let's keep these kids illuminated. Let's carry flashlights. We want all our residents and our businesses to be dealing with treats and not tricks. However, I will be out in force, meaning the police department. So if there's anything that looks suspicious, or anything we need to know, please don't hesitate and give us a call. But we will be out in force throughout the day, and into the late hours, to make sure we don't come across any of these individuals that want to give us some tricks that we're not going to accept. Okay? Stay safe, and good luck.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just one item. I discussed it with you earlier this evening. We received a request today from a group that's having a fundraiser as a bingo. And it's something that's kind of a, sort of a blast from the past, because in researching the council record, it seems as though the council did approve these licenses at least into the 1970s. And according to the state law, it's something that apparently you should do when someone requests. The problem is, the organization is planning on having it the first week in November, and your meeting, your next meeting is the first week of November. So obviously, it's a little difficult for them not to know if they have approval. And I know that legally, you can't approve it now, okay? But I would say that it's probably not inappropriate for you to be aware of it, and knowing that it will come on your next agenda. And I'm hopeful that the council will see to it that it's something that's suitable. It seems to be, it's the local parochial school, All Lady Memorial Comm, their parent-teacher's group. It's not unlike what had been approved in the past, from what I can see. And the best part is, the state police have already approved it. They're just waiting for us to put our seal of approval on it all.
So could I have a motion to add this to the agenda for discussion purposes only?
So moved.
And we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Okay. So, we can speak about this this evening? We can share our thoughts of positives or negatives, if you will?
I just can't vote on it.
And you just can't vote on it? Does anyone have an objection to it? We can make it quick like that. Does anybody have any objections?
I, just me personally, I just, I was following the town clerk's, you know, findings of this, so I just want to make sure we know. I'm in full support, but I just want to be, you know, aware of if there's any concerns, that I'm going to look to my solicitor, that this is before us. That's all.
I would agree before us if the state police have already approved it. I mean, most of those things go because--
According to the state--
There's an ordinance somewhere?
According to the state law, which our, and as a matter of fact, we even have a fee structure, okay? But our ordinance specifies that you have to refer to the state law. I look to the state law, and send it to the solicitor. And basically, what it says is that the local licensing authority, which is your honorable body, shall grant the license for this once they do receive approval from the state police.
Okay. Okay.
So, what I've heard, without a vote, is there was no objection to this whatsoever, which would probably be a good idea of what would happen at our next meeting, if it is in front of us. So, should I have a motion to continue this to our next meeting for a vote? Is that a--
Well, the petition will be before you. So there's no, I don't think there's any need to do anything except--
We already did it--
Just be aware.
So if we end up having the special meeting that we talked about, that we needed sooner than later, we would just put this on then, right?
Obviously, we could bring it up sooner.
If that ends up happening before the next meeting, I don't know if it will, but--
Beautiful. Oh, it's a good point.
Yeah.
So no action necessary? No action taken? No vote?
During to executive session pursuant to 4246585, with regard to the lease of real property, Russ Russ Realty.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Good night, everyone.